Good evening, welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for April twenty seven, twenty twenty three. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Uh pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Francisco, uh call to order. Uh I think you'll say how notices went out and any sunshine announcements.
Yes, in accordance with the open public meeting act, notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk. We have noted to be marked.
Okay, that will be B one for tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Bridget. Um please take roll call whenever you're ready.
Uh Commissioner Park?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shadine?
Yes.
Commissioner Aruho?
Here.
Uh Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Donnelly?
Here.
Uh Vice Madam Chair Coyle?
Here.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Here.
You have a total of seven commissioners tonight.
Thank you. Um same thing, swear and staff whenever you're ready, please, Bridget.
Would you raise your right hands to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you will give this evening will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um Francisco, any correspondence or adjournments?
Yes, let me share my screen. Okay. And this aside from what is adjourned, um which I'll go through briefly in a few, we do have an old business item number or item B case Z twenty two dash zero one six. Uh the app address is one eighteen and one twelve Old Bergen Road. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to the May eleventh meeting. Um and then I'll briefly go through what already is adjourned. So we have uh case Z twenty two dash zero eight three, the address is three forty five Central Ave. Uh they they will be carried with preservation of notice to May. Um uh the address is one fifty eight Oakland Ave. They also will be carried with preservation of notice to May eleven. And lastly, one twenty eight Glenwood. Um they have requested as well to carry to May eleventh with preservation of notice. And then all remaining items will be moving forward tonight.
Okay. Uh great, I guess I didn't. Um and front, I know you mentioned something, Tanya is on. I don't know if we wanted to discuss anything in particular about um not billboard law, but uh that's a slightly nuanced issue than than what we normally um see. Uh but let's listen as agenda ten. Um or we'll just go right into it when we get to it. So let's uh I guess we'll just get going. Um okay, so we'll start with case um the Z twenty two dash zero four zero. Um
Oh.
Yes.
I don't know if we want to bring the the extension first before we move into the short cases.
Sure.
Don't really, um I don't see Chuck. Oh, okay, promoting Veronica.
So this is for case Z twenty three dash zero one eight, one ninety nine Summit Avenue, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Yes, um my name is Veronica Schmeele of Connell Foley. I'm covering for Chuck Harrington this evening. Um so I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant one ninety nine Summit LLC regarding the property at one ninety nine to two oh one Summit Avenue, sixty four, sixty two to sixty four Storms Avenue, two oh three, two oh seven Summit Avenue, forty six Storms Avenue, and one through nine in Worsen Place. Um this is block fifteen two oh one, lots one point oh one, six point oh one, eighteen point oh one, nineteen point oh one, sixty four point oh one, and eighty nine. Um so tonight, the applicant is requesting two one-year extensions of its approval under case number Z twenty zero forty two. Um just by way of quick background, the applicant had also sought a subdivision under case number Z twenty zero forty one, which was perfected, and the subdivision map was recorded. Um so now the final major site plan approval under Z twenty zero four two um was to develop a new mixed-use prop project containing one hundred and seventy-two residential units, ten affordable housing units, retail space, one hundred and eleven parking spaces, as well as the development of a public park. Um Z twenty zero forty two was approved and memorialized by resolution on June twenty four, twenty twenty one. So the approvals are set to expire June twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. So again, applicant is seeking two one-year extensions, which would put us at June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Um in support of the reasoning behind applicant's request, it's really just to be safe so that applicant can develop the property in accordance with the approvals, specifically including the plans for the park. Um to be even more specific, the applicant is in the process still of obtaining all the necessary government approvals and is requesting this extension to ensure time to finish up that permitting and be able to put the shovel into the ground.
Okay. Um does anyone, I and I don't know, Ms. Schmeele, if you have uh anyone speaking on your behalf, I assume no, and that's totally fine on these extensions. Uh does anyone from the board have any questions?
Maybe I'm misremembering, but when this application was presented, they did make it seem like they had everything kind of worked out for the park space, which seemed a little odd. Uh I'm just curious when the applicant did start the permit application for the park space.
Um let me see, I can find that out super quickly. I believe part of the problem was they had to just request the franchise for this, which I believe is done. Um I don't know if I have in front of me actually, unfortunately. The um when that was actually, but I can find that out really quickly by texting.
I I I don't really want to bo- belabor this because I'll su- support the extension, but I I I don't want there to be another extension request, so I just want to put that on the record.
Okay, um does anyone else have any um any other questions? Why don't we also ask um if the public has any questions um regarding this uh extension request?
At this time, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, um I assume it's pretty limited to know staff comments on this, right?
That's correct. Uh staff recommends approval with prior conditions.
Okay, um does anyone want to make a motion?
Um yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z twenty three dash zero one eight as presented to the board this evening.
I second the motion.
Uh Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadine?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Aruho?
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Donnelly?
Yes.
Uh Madam Chair Coyle?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry. Uh Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, so now we're going to proceed with um case Z twenty two dash zero four zero. The address is seventy-four Bowers Street.
Still of course, too. We're not doing old business?
Yes, this is under old business. Seven A in the agenda. Yes, I'm at?
I may get my job, old job back.
Oh, do you want to uh be the timekeeper? Sure.
We're gonna need a timekeeper.
Okay, thank you.
Um good evening, everybody. So I I guess as a threshold matter, um I I think there were a lot of commissioners absent from the last hearing, so I think we need to confirm everybody read the transcript. Um all good, okay, wonderful. Um great, so Stephen Joseph um for the applicant, um so seventy-four Bowers Avenue, wh- where are we, I I guess, so two meetings ago, this was heard, um it was carried with preservation notice, testimony was taken. Uh direct testimony was presented in its entirety. Um the applicant's witnesses were cross-examined, public comment was open and closed. And tonight, I think you're going to hear from uh you're going to hear from Cynthia and her her witnesses, um them presenting their testimony. Um sure, Cynthia has a closing statement, I have a closing statement, and then we're going to hear from staff and we're going to vote tonight. Um but there's no more direct testimony on my end. Depending on what's said, there might be a couple of brief redirect questions. Um so I I will turn it over to Cynthia at this point, I think.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm I'm here tonight on behalf of Ashutosh Vias and Pundrik Vias. There are the owners of seventy-two Bowers Street. It is immediately next door to the applicant's property, seventy-four Bowers Street. It is a family home. And um tonight, we have two experts here to present um expert testimony. Janki Vias, who is an architect, and Michael Pasalano, a professional planner. And I I would ask that at the conclusion of their testimony, that public comment be reopened because the public did not have the benefit of hearing the full evidence presented to the board. Um uh the on March twenty-third, when the applicant presented uh its its uh expert testimony. So um I think Janki's here. She, our architect, is going to go first.
Hey, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the whole truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
Jan Kivyas, J A N K I V Y A F.
S is in Sam?
Yes, S is in Sam.
Hey, and um Ms. Vias, would you give the board the benefit of your education and professional um licensing?
Yes, um so I'm a registered architect um with a background in building performance simulation, and I'm registered with the State of New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. All active registrations.
Okay, and um your education also?
Um I have a bachelor's in architecture from NGIT, and I have a master's of environmental building design from the University of Pennsylvania, which is where I also teach building performance to graduate students.
Okay, um uh does the board accept Ms. Vias's credentials?
Yes.
Okay, um go ahead, Janki.
Hey, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Um I need permission, Francisco.
Okay, let me know if it works now.
Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna do my slideshow here. And you can still see the screen, right? You don't see my notes panel?
Nope, we see the screen.
Okay, perfect. So um I just want to give a quick overview of what I'll be presenting. I'm going to give you a quick overview of seventy-two Bowers Street site context and history. I'm in the unique position of being a licensed architect and additionally having lived in, lived at seventy-two Bowers Street. Um I did grow up um in Jersey City, went to Jersey City Public Schools, and um attended university in Jersey City, too. So um just giving a little bit of background on the site as I know it. Uh review of the site plan and proposed addition from three perspectives, right? The new and existing floor area, scope of demolition, building height. And lastly, I'm going to cover how light air and open space are negatively impacted by this proposal. Um so let's start with the about seventy-two Bowers Street. Um seventy-two Bowers Street is the greenhouse shown on this slide. The front facade for both seventy-two and seventy Bowers Street are set back from the property line and sandwiched between the church to the right um or the east, and seventy-four Bowers is to the left or west. To the rear, we have a very large forestory condominium building that was renovated from an abandoned bakery in the early two thousands. Before its renovation, the massing for the abandoned bakery is shown in the outline shown in the red lines. So that's approximately what the bottom, the massing was before the expansion in addition. The red lines on this slide also show the bakery lofts outline in plan view, and the yellow um overshadowing shows um uh my view, oh sorry, let me, this is a Google Earth historical satellite image from two thousand and two before construction of the bakery lofts began. When I was a child, my bedroom faced the sidewall of the old warehouse. The yellow triangle shows the view that I had from my childhood bedroom. Most kids could count sheep, right, when they're trying to fall asleep, but I used to count the airplanes flying by in the small sliver of sky I was able to see from my bedroom window. Uh we lost access to that sliver of the sky in two thousand and four when the bakery lofts were completed. According to the SDL portal, the certificate of occupancy for the Bakery Lost Condominium Association Building.
All right, could you slow down, please?
Sure, um according to that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, according to the SDL portal, the CEO for the Bakery Lost Condominium Association was
I'm good, I'm good, we're good.
Somebody need to mute.
Was issued towards the end of two thousand and four in November.
Stability, so does the superintendent.
It's Coyle, you mute your, thank you.
In this slide, you can see how the one hundred percent lot coverage expansion of the bakery loft building and the addition of a fourth story completely blocks our view of the sky for all rear windows of our home. This perspective shows the remaining sliver of area open to light and air on an otherwise claustrophobic site. So this is the view from Sherman Sherman Avenue, looking to the back of our property as well as seventy-four Bowers Street. This proposal is shown in the black shadowing and yellow outline. It literally overwhelms our property and takes away what little light and air is available to seventy two and seventy Bowers Street. Not only will the residential density increase, but it will, it also adds to the demand for parking. Um while the parking that the applicant proposes to add does not alleviate the amount of density that this proposed project creates. This is another perspective view just to show the massing that is proposed on this site adjacent to our home. The applicant's professional planner, Ms. Worstall, characterized our site as being in a bit of a well. I'd say that's a really good analogy for what this proposal creates, but wells are not occupiable. People don't live in them. I'd argue that this development actually creates a cell for solitary confinement, making our yard dark, depressing and suffocating.
Could you slow down and repeat that, please?
Yeah, I'd argue that this development actually creates a cell for solitary confinement, making our yard dark, depressing, and suffocating. So I've gone ahead and reviewed the applicant's drawings, and I wanted to highlight a few deficiencies in the design intent communicated by these drawings and how they are related to the devariances requested by the applicant. First, I'd like to speak to building and lot coverage. The applicant's drawings claim a principal structure and accessory building that occupies a building coverage of ninety-nine point four percent, where sixty percent is the maximum allowable. In my review and based on my understanding of the nature of this building, the building lot coverage should be approximately two thousand one hundred forty-three square feet, which is equivalent to a eighty-six percent building coverage, not ninety-nine point four percent as indicated by the applicant. How did I arrive at these numbers? So the first site feature that I'd like to highlight is the site survey plan prepared by Rodolfo Pierri and provided in the applicant's drawings. The site plan identified a one-story wood-framed garage behind the three-story brick-frame building. This is a mischaracterization of what is existing on the site. There are three separate structures on this lot. There's one principal structure, the three-story brick building, and two accessory structures. As you can see in the photograph, also taken from the drawing submitted by the applicant, there is one wood frame structure clad in the mint-green siding to the extreme rear of budding the bakery lofts. Then there is a three-bay brick parking structure abutting the mint-green wood frame structure. Between and then between the principal building and the accessory structure, there is a roll-top door that covers an alleyway that was once used to store trash by the bodega that used to occupy the ground floor commercial space. This helped keep the unsightly trash containers out of sight and smell for pedestrians. Oh, looks like there's some kind of error with the slide. So okay, if we look at the existing and proposed floor plans provided by the applicant, you can see my narrative and understand um how it reinforces what I just said. The green arrows overlaid on the existing first-floor plan to the top show access to and from the alleyway and the principal structure. But the three-bay brick parking structure and the mint-green structure do not have any access to or from the principal structure highlighted by the red arrows. The accessory spaces are only accessible from Sherman Avenue. So I would agree, argue that the alleyway should not be included in the existing building's gross floor area of two thousand four hundred eighty-five square feet. Furthermore, the definition for gross floor area requires that all portions of a building where the head height is higher than seven foot six inches should be included in the gross floor area. This has not been included. Uh the applicant has not included the area associated with the rooftop stair towers in their calculations for the new addition. Okay, so I'm not gonna, sorry, some time for math, but I won't bore you with the details. Essentially, the total gross area per my observations puts the total new gross area at an increase of roughly fifty-seven point five percent, which is more than the forty-nine point ninety-seven percent the drawings show, and is conveniently just below the fifty percent threshold for a major site plan review. All this is to say that the building is much bigger than the drawings admit to, and the scale of this proposed addition is absurd for an R one zone. So the scope of demolition. Their proposed site plan shows removal of the existing one-story garage walls as necessary. It's highlighted in yellow. And the inclusion of a new concrete pad. During Mr. Lewis's testimony last month, he said that the rear walls would be removed, obviously, because the addition is set back from the property line by fourteen inches at the side yard. And that's shown in the yellow uh highlighted area at the bottom plan. Um but what I'm confused about is how they're proposing to build two stories above the existing one-story. I'm obviously not a structural engineer, but I was required to pass structural systems exams before becoming a licensed architect. The back wall will be removed. The front walls are all different materials and mostly garage doors that will be removed anyway to accommodate the new parking in a new location on the site. So to accommodate the first-floor plan as it's proposed, all the sidewalls for the accessory structures will need to be removed as well. Then the new Sherman Avenue entrance will also require reconfiguration of that front wall, if you can call it a wall at this point. So essentially, everything beyond the principal structure will be removed. Once the garages are demolished to accommodate the proposed addition, the non-conforming structure, and to be clear, I'm not speaking about a non-conforming use. Michael will speak to that later. The non-conforming structure becomes a conforming structure. Okay, so let's talk about building height now. And I promise at the end, I'm going to tie this all together, but um uh this is just a diagram showing the building height, and there's a little bit of confusion on how building height is actually calculated. During uh his presentation last week, Mr. Lewis said building height is measured to the top of the existing roof. And this is how it's done in Jersey City. Uh this is in contradiction with how building height is defined by the land use ordinance. The land use ordinance defines building height as the vertical distance measured to the highest point of a building from the finished grade. A building's highest point shall be determined in accordance with height exceptions uh according to section thirty um three uh three hundred forty-five dash sixty. Section three forty-five dash sixty is the supplementary zoning regulations, which says roof structures and appearance instances can be excluded from the height calculations. In the case of seventy-four Bowers Street, this means that the housing for the stairways can be excluded from the building height. But bear in mind, sorry, but bear in mind, it still needs to be included in the gross floor area calculations. So this is the zoning comparison chart, which adds more confusion because it shows that the existing building height is thirty-five feet, and they're proposing an additional foot over the existing. And if we look at the plans, they say that there is a parapet, an existing parapet uh wall that is a minimum of four feet high. So let's go back to that Google Earth view. I don't know about you, but I don't really see a four-foot-high parapet wall existing on this site. Uh especially not at the front of the building, which is its highest point because the roof slopes back to the back of the building, where a short parapet wall is evident and allows for the ornate existing cornice to wrap the corner in a level manner. Even though this image is fuzzy due to how Google Earth shows it, I can say with fair certainty that the parapet wall, even at the back end of the building, is not four feet high. Uh and that's because the existing windows are approximately seven feet high. So a code-compliant parapet wall would need to be just a little more than half the window height that you see in this image. Um and that looks like it's about a fourth of the required height, maybe it's a foot. Okay, so another point to consider is that all new construction now has to meet certain energy requirements and provide a minimum level of insulation. According to the drawings, R forty-nine fiberglass insulation will be provided for this pro- project. Uh now to achieve a thermal resistance of R forty-nine with fiberglass insulation, you would need about fourteen inches of that insulation. The proposed roof structure is just under twelve inches deep. So the amount of insulation in the roof cavity between the roof structure would not be sufficient to pass energy code requirements. Details for the existing building roof are not shown in the drawings, but a building constructed in the late eighteen hundreds would typically have true two-by-tens or two-by-eight joists at the roof. In both scenarios, the existing and proposed roof would require additional continuous exterior-grade insulation to meet energy code during construction. Now, I understand you're probably thinking, why am I talking about construction-related issues during a zoning board hearing? It's important because these details directly affect the overall building height, which the applicant has failed to accurately represent. A code-required parapet wall and the actual height for that parapet wall that takes into account the amount of insulation and the thickness of paving units required is not shown on the elevations. Um so I used Bluebeam, which is a widely-used uh software in the AEC industry to review and mark up construction documents to calibrate the provided drawings and draw dimension strings to scale. So um this is regularly used by architects, contractors, and building professionals uh in the construction administration phase of projects to review drawings between contractors and architects. And um it's a very accurate program that can scale dimensions. And when I hold those dimension strings, this building is shown as forty feet, ten inches high to the top of the existing cornice. And it's forty-five feet and just so just under forty-six feet to the top of the stair bulkhead. And here's the side elevation showing the existing building and the proposed building that um shows an even height between the two. Now, if the existing building is going Now, if the existing building is going, sorry, the existing roof is going to be occupied. It's going to require parapet walls for safety. So either it's going to look like this. Or it can look like this. Uh, I can't say with certainty because the drawings provided by the applicant do not provide sufficient clarification. And the math just does not add up. Uh, in any option, this is one really, really tall building in the R one zone that far exceeds the allowable building height. Uh, lastly, I'm going to talk about sunlight impacts. Um, there was a shadow study that was submitted by the applicant and um, the application. Um, they provided a shadow study that looks at just shadow. I'm going to kind of flip that a little bit and I'm going to show you something a little bit different. Uh, and there's a couple of reasons for it that I'll go through, but uh, on the slide you'll see that I've used. Uh, some modeling software. Um, I don't want to get into the details of it, but basically there's a database where I can pull. All of the geometries for the building footprints in and automatically extrude them to a certain height. And then I went in and I made adjustments based on Google Earth measurements. And measurements, some measurements taken in the field. I use daylighting software to simulate uh. Not shadows, but actually the number of daylight hours that are available. In several locations and I'm going to go through them in just a minute. And to do like, I've done all of this work myself. And the reason, let me just go through it and then I'll explain why and how this is important. So uh, what you're seeing on the screen is a series of images. Sorry, let me go back and just talk about it. So there's three scenarios that I tested. There is the existing condition as is as the baseline. Then there's the proposed building that I recreated using drawings. Uh, that were provided by the applicant and then uh, there's an as of right and this as of right, I am. Replicating from the sun study that was the shade study that was done by the applicant. Okay, and then, so for each um. Option, I'm instead of showing. Different times of day, so the shadow study looks at. Three months on the equinox or the solstice at specific times of day. And so it's not a accurate picture of what the daylighting conditions would be over the course of a year. It's just snapshots in time, right? Those are point-in-time studies and they just look at shadow. So I'm taking that same, I'm not doing a point-in-time. Study, I'm looking at daylight over the course of the whole year. For each option, the existing, the proposed as of right. With the baseline condition, which is the existing condition, there's approximately seven hun- nine hundred seventy-five. Average hours of sunlight in the rear yard of seventy-two Bowers Street. With the proposed building. There is a fourteen percent reduction in the number of daylight hours available over the course of a year. The as of right building would be somewhere in between the base, uh, it's a nine percent reduction. Right, so in both options, there's a reduction. In the amount of sunlight that's provided. I think fourteen, losing fourteen percent of what little sunlight is available is quite significant. Um, so that's just for seventy-two Bowers Street. Now, if we look at the site for seventy Bowers Street. The proposed building reduces the amount of sunlight available to that building, and this is direct sunlight by twenty-four percent. Is a quarter of the year lost sunlight. Um, as of right would be about thirteen percent. If we look at the impacts on one thirty, one seventy-three Sherman Avenue, the front facade of one seventy-three Sherman Avenue. They're losing eleven percent with the proposed addition. If they did as of right, they would lose about two percent of their annual daylight available. And then the baseline, oh, sorry, for one seventy-five Sherman, you're losing, they're losing about ten percent. Of their average sunlight over the year. And if they did the as of right, it would be negligible, less than. Eight hours, they lose eight hours of sunlight over the course of the year. So all this to go, um, so the reason why I'm showing the hours of daylight instead of a shadow study is because this is something that can be quantified. You can understand the impacts of this proposed development on direct sunlight. Now, there's still limitations to this because we're looking at direct sunlight only. And we're not considering ambient daylight. And so you can think of ambient daylight, I don't know like what the weather was like today up in Jersey City, but. Pretty cloudy for me, right? And when it's cloudy, that's your ambient level of light, it's just an even distribution of light that's just constant during the daytime. Direct sunlight would be like when the sun is actually shining on you and you feel the warmth from the sun. And so a shadow study and this direct sunlight study that I'm showing you both look at. That direct sunlight, the sunlight that makes you feel warm. Not the ambient light levels. So we can use direct sunlight as an indicator of how dark a space is going to feel. Uh, in terms of ambient light, if direct sunlight is reduced, there isn't a direct correlation. In terms of how much ambient light is reduced. But you can say with certainty that the quality of a space, the access to good quality light will be reduced. And so that's what this series of studies shows to like, uh, attempts to uh illustrate. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any questions about what I'm showing. But um, I should have also mentioned, anything in blue is going to be like your darker areas and anything in yellow will be your brighter spaces. And the other takeaway that you can take from this study is. Uh, you can see that the average amount of sunlight on a building that's not impacted or shaded significantly. Is about sixteen hundred fifty over the course of a year. And if you look at the average amount of sunlight at a baseline level without any addition, we're already at. Uh, almost half of that. So we're already kind of impacted being in a dark well and they're proposing to create a even darker well. And just create a not great situation. And then very briefly, I just want to bring to your attention zoning changes under review for R one. Uh, in every aspect of um, the proposed changes. The intent is to stay small, the intent is to reduce building, uh, sorry, reduce lot coverage, reduce density. Maintain rear setbacks and reduce height. Uh, seventy-four Bowers is proposing to increase height, is proposing to. Re- not have any setbacks to the rear. It's in proposing to increase density. And it's not a proposal that is in line with where the zoning ordinance is going. Michael will talk to that more, but in summary, I just, to summarize everything I've said today. Seventy-two Bowers Street has already been impacted by zero lot line development on two of its three non-street-facing sides. The proposed building's scope and size is misrepresented by the drawings. There's far more floor area being added than is existing. Demolishing the garages and adding trees to the streets, streetscape. Already improves the site aesthetically, while increasing density on the site requires a D-five variance. And negatively impacts the neighborhood by burdening public and uh, burdening parking and public amenities. Building height will be far higher and requires a D-six variance to move forward. The proposed building makes a mockery of the fundamental intent and purpose of zordi zoning ordinances. By negatively impacting access to light air and open space on most of its adjacent neighbors. I would ask that you vote no today to stop this development from suffocating our home and neighborhood. Just so one city constituent can enjoy a much greater property utilization. That another equal constituent shouldn't be harmed. Imagine if all of the surrounding two twenty-five hundred square foot lots were allowed this level of utilization. And that's all I have for you today. I think Michael's going next.
Sorry, I was muted. Um, so I guess if the board has any questions, maybe we'll wait until Mr. Pesolano has also offered testimony. Okay, thank you. Um, and I, I see him here. Mr. Pesolano has been in front of this board more than once.
Yes, we, we accepted his qualifications before and we.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Uh.
You raise your right hand to be sworn.
I be sworn, okay.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, please state and spell your full name.
You're welcome. I am Michael J. Pesolano, that's spelled P.E. S.S.O.L.A.N.O., Licensed Professional Planner, State of New Jersey, Licensed Still in Good Standing, Originally Issued nineteen eighty-four. So I've been pre- pre-accepted, so that's uh, a little bit, so uh, thank you for that and nice to be before this board again. Always a courteous treatment and I look forward to being here every single time. And I, I hope you still see it that way. I, I have a lot to cover here, so I'm going to do my best to be uh concise. I need to speak slowly so that I can be recorded, um, so there's two forces working against each other right there, but. Uh, we're, we'll get through it as everyone does. Um, the uh, application has been sufficiently described by prior witnesses. But in order to prepare for my remarks tonight, I did indeed. Uh, look at the, the application plans extensively, uh. Walked and photographed the neighborhood to get a feel for uh, what's on the ground there. Also, uh, looked at aerial imagery, uh, visited with the applicable master plan and zoning regulations. Discussed it with uh, my clients as well and uh. Have formulated uh, my take on, on what the, the application represents here relative to the key question. Does it um, warrant approval by virtue of meeting the, the positive and negative criteria? Uh, for the requested relief. The. Application testimony about the zoning and, and the uh, variance relief focused on. The um, application being submitted for a D-two uh, expansion. Of a pre-existing non-conforming use. And that's where I started scratching my head because um, this application. Actually doesn't propose to expand uh, a non-conforming use, it proposes to, to change the use. By virtue of, of going from a, a two-unit building to a four-unit building. What's significant about that change, it is from a two-family classification to a multi-family. Classification. And it is my clear understanding that D-two. Variance relief is not for uh, approving changes in use, we're looking at the same use. In an expanded fashion. And only that. And so um, I'm not sure if this has been discussed internally. Uh, uh, on the city's side at this point. But if so, maybe it's a good idea now to uh, clarify. How uh, the, the, the city is seeing what I just said um, from its perspective.
I mean, I think that the.
Do you want me to, yeah, I don't know, did you want me to step in or? Sorry.
I. I imagine you can re- say something at the end, but let.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of what I, what I was envisioning, I mean Cynthia, unless you want the city planner testimony to be in the middle of your report, you're, you know. I don't think it makes sense to.
I, no, I, I a hundred percent agree with you, yes, we, let's keep, let's keep going.
Okay, so um, thank you for uh. The, the opportunity to, to present that, I will come back to it, of course. The analysis that uh, Ms. Morestel presented for uh, the expansion of the non-conforming use. Um, was focused on, in my perception, uh. Oh, by the way, I did uh, view the entire video of the uh. March twenty-third meeting at which I was not present due to a scheduled conflict, but uh, informed myself of what happened by seeing the meeting. Uh, in its entirety, in addition to the other preparations I did. Um, the. Evaluation for uh, a D-two analysis, in my understanding. Is that uh. The use must be uh, found to be improving the situation in some fashion. And the particular improvement that is desired is twofold, one is to. Uh, arrive at something that's more harmonious with uh, the zoning for the area. And two, something to be more harmonious with uh, permitted uses in the neighborhood. The testimony that I heard um, focused pretty much on um, not that, it focused on. Uh, the aesthetics of the, the new facade of. And the, the matching with the existing uh. Multi-family next door on Sherman. As being uh, evidence that this is, you know, a good thing um, visually. Um, and it may be for some people, but um, what is part of the analysis is to look at the whole picture. And I did not hear really uh, much in the way of uh, consideration for. The mass and the scale of this very unusual proposal which uh, seeks to fill. And I mean fill the entire lot at seventy-four Bowers Street with three stories of building. Corner to corner, up to bottom, three stories. Lot line to lot line, except for a fourteen-inch strip that uh, the applicant uh, offered uh, during its uh. Testimony last time. So the. The analysis uh, by uh, suggesting that the, the use. Harmonizes with the multi-family um, next door. Is not the, the proper calculus for uh, this type of uh, application, in my opinion. It needs to focus on the harmonizing with permitted uses in the zone. There are certainly in every community um. Longstanding existing things that do not uh, conform. The, the subject property itself is one of them, established a long time ago. However, um, zoning seeks to uh, pull things more into conformance with itself than to go away from it. In, in overview, um, the, this. Unavoidable takeaway for me is that. The application seeks to really, really, really pack a lot into this twenty-five hundred. Uh, square foot property. And it would be one thing if it were out in the middle of an island somewhere and the zoning says don't do it, but. It's nestled within a, an active occupied neighborhood. And for uh, the, the. Development to be so extensive here. Truly important to take stock of all the impacts that might be accruing to that project, positive and negative. Um, I'm wanting now to um, shift a bit to uh. A few slides to um, show what informed my conclusions um, spoken already and yet to come. So if I may um, share the screen. Um, I'm not recalling if this exhibit, which uh, is the exhibit of. Thank you spoke from was marked as a number, was it given a number?
No.
And should we give it a number for reference?
Yes.
Yeah, I gave it a number.
Yeah, if, if you could, that would be.
Okay, let's call this O-one. With today's date, is that sufficient, Mr. La Paglia? With today's date, is that sufficient, Mr. La Paglia?
Yes, oh-one.
Thank you. So exhibit oh-one uh, was by Vias um, spoke to uh, for the bulk of it. Uh, there are a few slides that um. Or on the tail end that I'd like to uh, speak to. For some reason, the uh, zoom controls are hovering right over my screen controls. In, in my view of this.
You can.
How, can someone tell me how to overcome that? I'm not uh.
You can also hit Ctrl-L, I think, should.
Control. Thank you.
Did that work? Oh, there you go. Alright.
I still have the, the, the screen controls, but um. I'm gonna just page through to, to get to my. Material. Okay. So. This is slide uh, one of six that I'm going to speak to. And it shows uh, an aerial image that I downloaded today. I can't certify what date it was. Was captured by the maker, but I think it's a fair representation. Of the, the subject property and its uh, immediate area. Um, and the red arrow that is drawn on it by myself. Uh, depicts a, a very clear uh, corridor uh, for movement of air and for uh. Transfer of light from property to property through direct uh, means and reflective means. Um, the, the subject property has the little red balloon uh, at the corner of the building. Um, that came along with the search results for seventy-four Bowers Street, uh, seventy-two Bowers Street is the blue-sided building. Uh, just to the right uh, of that in this image. So here's, here's the existing um, configuration of. What is uh, typically found uh, in Jersey City R-one neighborhoods by my observation. We have open space areas behind the principal structures, uh, good light and air. With the uh, construction of the, the proposed uh, development. Uh, roughly characterized by the um, amateur line work that I put onto this drawing. Um, it, it shows the extension of a three-story structure uh, from the back of. The principal portion of seventy-four Bowers up to the, the wall of the bakery property as it's known. Uh, the bakery lofts. And uh, you don't have to squinter or think real hard to imagine that uh, if you were standing. In the rear yard of uh, seventy-two Bowers. You would be uh, facing some very imposing views and not very pleasant at that. Uh, this would be the, the third solid wall uh, framing this. Uh, spa- uh, small backyard area, which is the outdoor space available for seventy-two Bowers and seventy Bowers. For the east of seventy-two. Um, all of this isn't the applicant's doing, but it is the applicant's choice to um. Make this additional configuration um. By virtue of seeking the variance relief that's needed to, to get there. Here's a, a, a similar view of the same area, again, the subject property at seventy-four Bowers. Indicated by the uh, red balloon. Uh, shown at the corner of, of Bowers Street and Sherman Avenue. The uh. The image uh, I'll move my cursor over it as I'm talking, uh, except for the church here. Uh, a very clear area of backyards. Uh, open space, non-building areas, and you can see evidence of across the street, the, the, the same thing. Um, still some backyard area here off of Webster. And the, the, the takeaway for me in, in this image is that. Um, we have good light and air, uh, the R-one coverage setback. And massing limits uh, are serving their intended purposes, those limits being in the zoning ordinance. And those limits being what are proposed for extensive variances um, to build this project. In this application. This is uh, simply a representation of, you know, that additional massing from the, the overview. So the proposed project here is, is filling nearly one hundred percent uh, of lot. Horizontally and vertically. Of course, it doesn't go up to the sky, but going up three stories is a significant change for me. On the, the scale and massing uh, of this uh, building. In the proposed version. It, again, is proposing to cover the entirety of the lot, say for fifty or so square feet. Uh, in linear fourteen-inch width uh, along the, the eastern. Sideline of, of the property, uh, not much consolation for. Uh, the thirty-six-plus foot wall that will be. The, the, the lasting every single day, three hundred sixty-five days a year view. Uh, for the occupants at seventy-two Bowers and seventy Bowers um. As they are in their backyards and, and also from uh, the windows here at seventy-two is, uh, was the Os pointed out. So the uh, importance of pointing this out is. At. The, the application purports to show on, on the Sherman Avenue side. Of, of newer building finish um, and basically seeking to, to sell the proposal largely on the basis. Of that accomplishment. Without really uh, properly addressing the, the substantial. Uh, overreach uh, that this pro- project proposes on this twenty-five-hundred square foot. Uh, corner lot in Jersey City, and certainly the very little concern. Uh, was mentioned for uh, the visual impact of this imposing massive structure. Occupying the entire uh, currently open rear boundary of the adjoining property. To that uh, height of thirty-six plus feet. Two different worlds. Uh, the, the, the public enjoys the, the new facade every time they walk or drive past. But as I said, the occupants of seventy-two Bowers Street will have to live with this day in and day out. And, and that is to me a, a very improper outcome. For a land use decision to reach, to voice that kind of um, condition. On a property that's already severely impacted by uh, the similar thing, but this uh, just making it worse. Being the third and final leg i- in the, the walling off of, of this rear yard area. So um. Clearly, this would be highly impactful, in my opinion, to the adjacent neighborhood seventy-two Bowers. And the intent of the R-one bulk regulations and the prevailing massing pattern of also impact. And still a little farther out, the view to the, to the wider neighborhood. Um, which is also characterized by the same existing uh, pockets of. Uh, mostly rear yard space, but evidence that. Uh, the prevailing pattern is for uh, principal buildings. Not to fill the entire lot uh, in this immediate neighborhood. And the proposal in front of the board tonight is to do just the opposite, is to completely fill it to a. Extensive uh, and unconscionable uh, level, given its setting and uh, expected impacts on the neighbor. This um. Area that I'm talking about, again, the, the area I showed in it, in an earlier slide, wherever you see a tree crown. Um, also indicating some open areas, um, some larger than others, uh, but. Clearly, uh, this is a neighborhood that still has a good bit of uh, open space and access. To producing its own oxygen through sunlight and vegetative growth. Um, in this era of uh, climate change, particularly important for a city that's uh. I don't know where it stands with, with uh, its measurement of green area, but as building continues to cover more and more of the land, there. Uh, may indeed be less and less of, of this type of uh, natural uh, vegetation occurring, so. Every bit of it being lost, um, is, is at a higher stake uh, as time goes on, uh, in my estimation. So, um, final slide, um. Uh, to me, development that eliminates the remaining open areas uh. In this area is contrary to uh, the planning intent to preserve the character of R-one areas. And utilize uh, green infrastructure. Um, so these yellow Xs. Are not a, a conclusive, I'm sorry, all-inclusive uh, depiction of where. If everybody did the same thing, these existing areas would be lost, but you get the idea, I think, that it. It would be quite a game changer for the landscape here and, and the quality of life in the neighborhood overall. So it, it turns the focus to um, what is particularly appropriate about um. Mm, this uh, location. That is uh, something that doesn't really raise uh. To um, better complete, if you will. There was no analysis about what's particularly suitable about this particular uh, location. Um, the evaluation for doing that uh, rests within uh, the D-one. Use variance type of analysis, but still um, it begs the question if um. This property owner is afforded a lengthy list of relief items. And a big changes in massing uh, to boot, uh, big changes in lot coverage. Big changes in building coverage by a three-story structure, that is. Um, what does that mean for uh, sending a signal or setting the tone for other similarly situated. Corner lots in the R-one, which, of which there are hundreds. So um, to me, there, there's, there's nothing particularly uh. Calling for this type of development here, except uh, the benefits that would accrue to uh, the applicant. Themselves, not public benefits. Speaking of public benefits, uh, the planning testimony spoke uh, to several of the purposes of the municipal land use. Law as being advanced by this application and thus constituting uh, special reasons. On the positive criteria side of, of her D-two uh, evaluation. Uh, to me, um, in the absence of a careful evaluation and true recognition of. The substantial impact to the neighborhood, as you heard me say, as you've heard Ms. Vias uh, talk about through. The reduction of light and air, which is. Is really quite apparent, even without the analysis, the wonderful analysis, I think she did. To uh, really lay out what the changes would be. Um, I don't believe that the, the zoning ordinance. In any aspect says, let's do this. Let's do something like this, even. The, the zoning ordinance of today and the one um, that is in the pipeline for tomorrow. As Ms. Vias pointed out, is not calling for obliteration of all open space on. R-one lots, and instead it is calling for pulling back actually of the uh. Maximum lot coverage from a, a level of eighty-five percent to seventy-five percent. It's still proposing to hold the sixty percent building coverage, still. S- seeking to keep a, a backyard um, intact. What you saw in one of my slot, in several of my slides, was the zoning ordinance doing its job. That's what happens when you, when you enforce it and respect the zoning ordinance, you, you get a pattern that is pleasing. Uh, because the governing body took stock of, of what the, the city should be and can be. And provided for zoning that will get it there. This proposal tramples completely on the, the principles and intent of that uh. But zone, in my opinion. So uh, for the, the applicant's proposal, again largely based on aesthetic benefits. Um. Sort to equate the, the purpose of municipal land use law, A, uh, C. G.I. Um, I might be missing one. Um, you've heard those letters given off before, purpose A is the, the most important one, which is to uh, promote. The morals and general welfare of the community. Um, actually, there, there is guidance um, in how that is supposed to be done, right in uh, the purpose statement of. Chapter three forty-five uh, current zoning ordinance for the city of Jersey City. And that um. Is worded as follows. It, it copies the wording of, of purpose A in the statute, which is to plan. And guide the appropriate use or development of all land in a manner which will promote the public health, safety. Morals and general welfare by means of including the following. And there are four items here. Um, one is obviously by regulating location of buildings, uses and standards for development. But the second one, I thought, uh, particularly um. Related to, to what uh, should be done here. Um. The, the general welfare, in other words, by the city's own language, would be advanced by prohibiting. Inco- incompatible uses and prohibiting uses buildings or structures. Which are incompatible with the character of development of the permitted uses. Within specified zoning districts and surrounding areas. And that ties it into my earlier remark about when, when you're evaluating a D-two use variance. And the question of harmonizing with the neighborhood comes up. It really is focused on harmonizing with the permitted uses in the neighborhood, not the opposite. To look at the opposite and say, yeah, there's lots of that, or we're consistent with that, or we're just like that. Is really another way of saying, trying to assert uh, that several wrongs somehow end up making a right. And, and I don't think that's true in zoning, and there's even some language in COGS that says pretty much the same thing, that it's. Not necessarily a compatible and good thing, because there are other uh, similar non-permitted, non-conforming. Uh, uses in the surrounding area. Uh, the, the key uh, purpose that I think uh, falls flat. Uh, that was cited as a basis for granting this approval in the planning testimony was. Uh, purpose C in the municipal land use law, uh, which is also parroted uh, word for word in the. Uh, city of Jersey City uh, purpose section that I'm reading from. Is to provide uh, adequate light, air and open space. I won't repeat the testimony Ms. Vias capably gave uh, with her um. Very compelling depiction of a, of an actual measurable reduction, significant reduction. Of light and air that others uh, take uh, for granted and, and see no threats to, but this, this particular. Of two sets of ne- two neighbors here at seventy-two and seventy Bowers face quite a different future. This um. Application is approved and not by virtue of this application providing. Adequate light, air and open space, just the opposite again is what is proposed. Ms. Werestill cited uh, purpose E uh, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. And concentrations. Uh, there's more to that, but you, you'll get the gist. I don't think the governing body needs any help whatsoever to depict where uh, population densities should be. Gathered. depict where population densities should be gathered. It's not a fine job. The planning board and governing body of the city have been keeping good order of its planning house over time, by my observation. Plenty of focus by staff, et cetera, the public weighing in generously and helping shape the zone plan for the community before present, and I expect that to continue in the future. So in that context, density certainly is a consideration and appropriate population densities very much on the radar of those entities I just mentioned that participate in the planning process. Ending with the governing body legislating what is the appropriate density in every area of the city where density is regulated. The city does not need individual developers to establish appropriate population densities, in my view. That scheme has already been worked out on a mass scale citywide by virtue of encouraging multifamily uses and higher densities in the mixed-use corridors that are quite distant from the core areas of the R one district. In other words, not adjacent lands, but lands that are elsewhere in the community. So this proposal to add two more units, essentially doubling the residential density, where a maximum of two units are permitted, is not establishing any appropriate density. It's contravening the work of the community in setting forth a sensible density distribution scheme. Purpose G and I are the last ones I'll cover. Purpose G was cited and sure you probably hear that absolutely every application because it sort of like covers all the uses that are new on the scene and want to be there to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations or a variety of residential, recreational, commercial and industrial uses and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements. Again, planning houses in order in Jersey City, I don't see any need for an individual applicant to do that job for the city by virtue of this overreaching massive scale project in a low density, diminutive scale type of neighborhood. Purpose I expresses to promote a desirable visual environment. Well, if that's a basis for variance relief on its own, I would be shocked. If so, that would suggest that property owner proposes to put a new coat of paint on their building and they're therefore entitled to zoning relief. And you know, that's a ridiculous example. It doesn't work that way. And so the desirable visual environment, of course, is enhanced with refreshed properties, but this is not the only model that could come along and do that same thing, but without the detrimental effects that would accrue to the current proposal. Again, I can't emphasize enough how unconscionable it is to me for an application to propose this extent of development in this location. The analysis, I don't think, gave due regard to the very substantial impacts on the neighbors to the east by virtue of this expansion, both vertically and horizontally to the ultimate limits of the lot. So that is ponderous impact, as prior testimony, my own testimony, has indicated the massing and the use intensity of the land use itself out of character with what's intended and wanted in the R one zoning district. Bear with me one moment, please. So to really run down the actual substantial detriment that I see owing to this application, if it were approved, it would profoundly be impactful to the adjacent neighbors at seventy-two Bowers Street. It's important to recognize that the proposed extension of building walls, both horizontally and vertically, for the purpose of accommodating is for the purpose of accommodating a use itself that is not permitted in the R one zoning district. So the mission falls flat for me that that's any reason to go to such extent with massing on this property. Zoning itself seeks to retain forty percent of open space not covered by any buildings. It does that by sustaining the sixty percent maximum building coverage limit. So there's an expectation that each lot is going to carry its own, if you will, or sufficient greenery and open space throughout the R one neighborhood. The three-story plus wall on the property line of the adjacent neighbor will greatly decimate access to the light and air, as indicated by prior testimony. Bakes the question, are only certain residents of the city entitled to protection of quality neighborhoods? Or is it a universal protection? That's an important consideration, I think, for the board in deciding this application because as I see it, there's an imbalance of great magnitude of detriment on the particular property owners I've spoken to, to the east of the subject property. The result of the robbing of light and air is certainly in total discord with Purpose C of the municipal land use law to provide adequate light and open space. And speaking of that topic, then I'll leave it. The applicant's witnesses, neither one of them spoke to the supply of air. Light was evaluated, sunlight was evaluated. But that word is in there for an important reason, and it becomes ever more important as climate change does its thing, raising temperatures and cities are prone to suffering from heat island effects where you have so much coverage, it's a bad thing. And where you have the vertical blocking of the movement of air from side to side, it makes that situation even worse. I see that as a substantial detriment for the entire neighborhood, as the entire neighborhood enjoys the same basic chunk of air day in and day out as it moves from place to place. The negative criteria relative to the question, would the proposal result in a substantial impairment to the zone intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance? By virtue of the variance being grant, a wholehearted yes for me, and I think you heard me say enough already to know why. This proposal is sharply different, sharply divergent, excuse me, from the recently affirmed planning vision for the R one zone. This stands out like a sore thumb, basically, as far as its lack of accord with the planning vision for the entire R one district, which is a very large zoning district in the city. There is no indication, no direction from the master plan or the governing body to expand the utilization of our one lots interior or corner to the overreaching extent proposed for seventy-four Bowers in this application. So the proposed project, to me, clearly smacks of an attempt to zone by variance, which is not permissible in New Jersey. The governing body is the sole legislative entity that has the power to zone. So if this is a trend that makes sense, it's for the governing body to take it up and make it into legislation to embrace it. This is so out of kilter, this application with the zone plan. I rarely see an application that is so much in discord with the zoning vision for a community.
Excuse me, Mr. Passalano, are you close? Are you close to wrapping this up? You've made so many salient points, but a number of them have also been made by Ms. Vias and I'm just saying, we have a lot on the agenda tonight and I'm kind of running out of patience.
Thank you for listening, Ms. Honaly. It's helpful to me. I can be long in the tooth, but there's a lot to say here. As I said at the beginning, I will try to speed it up as much as possible. I feel for you. I really do. I've worked with boards long enough to know that it can be intense to sit through applications. So.
Well, Mr. Passalano, like, I mean, what additional points are there to make? We've heard fifteen different times that the primary objection is that because of the buildout to maximum extents, so there's no open space in the back, although there's currently some garages that it would negatively impact light to the two adjacent properties to the east. You can say that fifteen more times. I understand, we fully appreciate the objection, we fully appreciate that the community also raised objection to the extent of the increase of the property and that that's out of character with the neighborhood which has space there. But I think I just summarized your entire point in thirty seconds.
I love the way you do that, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that you've done so. I will move on. The two topics of relief that are in the mix here are the bulk relief of several things that I'm not going to detail or describe even. But the basic analysis was offered that the benefits outweigh the detriments. The benefits were such things as making the driveway a little more narrow, making slight tweakings of percentages to a negligible degree without speaking at all of the things that you just detailed, the massiveness of the project. Final topic for the board's consideration, in my professional opinion, I believe that because the use in the mix here is now multifamily, it is not exempt from density relief. There is an imputed density standard in the lot area of the R one district that is being greatly exceeded by the application. Ms. Worstel cited sixty-seven units per acre density for the four proposed units on this lot, two units are measured measure out to, just for the sake of the record, thirty-four point eight for dwelling units per acre. So that versus it's actually sixty-nine point six eight dwelling units per acre is what's proposed. So that density excess for the Rubbs v Slow Tower case, which is a preeminent density case in New Jersey land use utilized and imputed measurement for density to arrive at the conclusion that density, a D five density variance is required for this excess density that's not there now, but is proposed. So in concluding in ninety seconds, I'll say it. There's no testimony on the nature and the operation of the commercial element. So for that reason, the board does not have enough information to make an informed decision. There was no density analysis, merely a net opinion that the density is comparable to the surrounding neighborhood. There was no data offered to support that conclusion and should have been. Project is egregiously overreaching. It exhibits four special reasons to grant such an intensive and imposing project that's substantially detrimental to the neighbor's peaceful enjoyment of property. It's really contrary to recently affirmed requirements for the R one zone. And if the application fails to meet the positive and negative criteria for the relief requested. Thanks so much for bearing with me. I am done.
Cynthia, anything else?
Yeah. No, I think I just would eventually like a chance to sum up, but probably there will be some questions.
I have no desire to cross-examine these witnesses at all. I have a few very brief redirect questions for the applicant's witnesses, whatever order the board would like to do that in.
Well, if you don't have anything for the experts, does anyone from the board have any questions for these experts? It's also totally fine if you say no, and we just move on.
No.
Okay, so Stephen, we're up to you.
Well, Catherine. Yeah. Are they going to be, we're going to ask other witnesses, we're going to ask public, what's going next? Because I'd like to wait till my questions until that.
Yes, yes, I think we'll. I mean, it looks like from the transcript, we fully opened this already to the public. I'm not sure I understand why we're opening it again to the public, but my understanding is that that was the first thing that was requested when this started. And Benny, you didn't say, you know, we definitely shouldn't do that. I mean, I definitely don't want to hear from people who have already spoken from the public.
Right. But if there were some people that were coming to comment on what we just heard from the other side.
Yeah, but even, I mean, I don't know how to limit it. I'd be happy to hear from people who did not speak at the last hearing, but nobody who spoke at the last hearing, I think, has been. And so I would disagree with Cynthia that that no one has learned anything new, that they didn't already know, that the public did not already present in the last hearing. Benny, do you think I should? I'm totally out of line and absolutely here.
If somebody has a comment on Cynthia's witnesses, fine.
Yes.
Not going to happen. What people are going to say is we're opposed to the project, so I was just looking to see who spoke the last time. So we just make sure we don't duplicate that. So let me get that together.
Okay.
But getting back to what Catherine is asking, Stephen Joseph wants to present two rebuttal witnesses.
Right.
Oh, shouldn't he present those and then we'll go together with the with the commission, whether they have questions and then we'll go back to the public to see if anybody is going to comment on these particular witnesses. That might make more sense.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense.
And how's Bridget doing?
Oh, that's another thing. Yes, it's eight o'clock, Bridget. It's already an hour and a half here. Take a break.
Sure.
Okay. Ten minutes, Mr. Chairman, more or less?
I mean, ideally lasts, I mean, I hope to get through more than one application here. We're talking about a four-unit building, so I hope that we can get through this today. Thank you. We'll be back in five minutes. Is Bridget back?
I'm right here.
Oh, there we go.
Bridget makes the call, so if everyone is back and she is ready to go, then sure.
All right, wonderful. All right, so we're going to redirect Jeff. I just have one question for him. All right, wonderful. Um, all right, so we're gonna redirect Jeff. I I just have one question for him. Um. Uh, I think we have to get you sworn in, Jeff, because you weren't sworn in tonight.
Sure.
Right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your full name for the record?
Jeffrey Lewis, uh, J F F R Y L E W I F.
Thank you.
Okay, and and.
And for the record, my license is in good standing in New Jersey.
Great, wonderful. Um, all right, Jeff, so we heard a whole lot of testimony. Um, I I just want to talk about the height with you of of the building. I'm assuming you disagree with with um objectors characterization of the height. Uh, if if you could just, I guess, tell us what the height of the building is and explain how how we calculated that and and why that's correct.
Uh, sure. So again, uh, building height is measured to the top of a flat roof, and that is what we're measuring it to on this building. It's the top of the existing flat roof. Um, parapets up to sixty are a definite uh height requirement as per the um zoning ordinance, so we're not counting the parapet. Um, I also did want to note um on that blurry drawing where it looked like the building didn't have a parapet. Um, that's a little deceiving. Uh, again, it was a very blurry drawing. It's hard to see, but what's really going on there is the roofing is built across the roof. It's built up the wall. It's built over the parapet. It's just everything is roofing, so you can't tell what's parapet with roof. There's no way to see it. There is a parapet on this building. Um, but I think that's all kind of semantics, but I really want to stress is looking from the street where that parapet is, it's not moving. It has the cornice there. It's staying exactly where it is. It's not getting any taller. It's staying exactly the height that it is right now.
Great. Uh. Thank you, Jeff. Um, I then want to bring Carolyn up. I have two questions for Carolyn. Let's get Carolyn sworn in.
I'm here.
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and state and spell your name for the record.
Yeah, it's Carolyn Worstell, W O R S T E L L.
Yeah.
Okay, Carolyn, and your license is in good standing tonight as well, correct?
It is, yes.
Wonderful. Um, I'm assuming you also disagree regarding the height, um, and you agree with Jeff. Um, if you just reinforce that maybe in a couple of words.
Yes, uh, so as just stated, you know, per the code, height is measured from, you know, the finished grade up to the highest point of the roof. There are the height exceptions um that were enumerated. That includes the um appurtenances and the um parapets. Um, and so our height is proposed at the thirty-six feet, um, which is not a D six variance. Um, we are permitted to thirty-four based on our floor-to-floor heights of the existing structure which we're matching. So we are seeking and did provide testimony to support a bulk variance for those two additional feet. Um, so that we are not requesting and do not need a D six height variance.
Great, thank you, Carolyn. And uh, let's let's talk a little bit about the sun study, because I know there was some conversation about that at the last hearing as well, and the the sun study presented by the objector didn't look too different, uh, if at all different from what we presented. Is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, so I I took a look at this and and I would say that the two sun studies are telling very much the same story. Um, and then the main story here is that um there's significant shadow on these properties today. Um, you know, they were showing, I think it was around sixteen hundred hours of sun is, you know, if uh basically if you don't really have any shadow impacts, um, and that's for your average annual sunlight. Um, and these properties were around nine hundred. So, you know, it's it's like almost um a little more than half. Um, so there's significant shade on these properties um throughout the year at, um, you know, it's different times. So the the impact here is incremental um in comparison. Um, and and as was shown, you know, there is the 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 additional incremental from what is as of right to what is being proposed. Um, that that's the 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 difference really is that incremental increase. Um, and for seventy-two Bowers, the area of the the greatest impact, which is right at that rear, um, it is my understanding that there is an existing structure back there, uh, some sort of a shed or something.
And we do have a, we do have a photo that we just want to enter into evidence of that shed as well. Uh, do this, I'm just gonna share. Um, I don't know what number we left off last time. Um. But the this is a, it's a photo of the backyard of seventy-two Bowers. Um. And Carolyn, the incremental impact that we're speaking about is back here where this where this shed structure is, correct?
Correct, yes, it's closest to the the rear wall of the the um bakery building, as people have been calling it. So. Um, yeah, so that that's the area of the greatest impact um that that is being uh with the additional shadows, so.
Okay. All right, wonderful. That's all the the questions I have. Um, I I I I think we do need a just a number designation for zip it. Um. A, I think we're at A three, so we'll name it A three and I'll get that over to Bridget, uh, and that's my, that's my redirect. That's that's all I have.
A three.
Okay. Cynthia, is there anything that you wanted to add before we open to the public? And the public will narrowly only be entitled to ask questions about uh what they heard today.
You mean, do you mean questions for the rebuttal witnesses or?
I I don't know, whatever.
I said, I had a couple of questions for um for Jeff, actually, for Mr. Lewis. Okay, um. Jeff, I just, I just wanted to, yeah, hi, how are you? Uh, I just wanted to ask you, yeah, I'm I'm fine. Um, so I wanted to ask you, um, so um, did you, did you have a measurement for the existing parapet and?
I do not have the exact measurement of the existing parapet, but if you look from the actual street, you can see that there's at least a three-foot parapet at the back end of the building.
And how how tall is the parapet supposed to be?
Uh, I believe the roof parapet would be required to be, um, actually, it's only required, um, where there's going to be people and it would need to be forty-two inches.
Oh, okay, so it's forty-two inches, you said?
Yes.
Okay, but there's there's going to be a roof deck, so you did, so the parapet would be required to be a certain code compliant height surrounding where the roof deck.
Right, right. So so if the if the exterior roof deck isn't high enough, we have uh um at least five-foot green buffer strip around the pro- around the uh the front of the building, the sides of the building, and we would have a a higher, like a railing behind that buffer strip. If necessary.
Okay, um. Okay, I I think, um. And and I think you had said there were like a lot of layers on the roof. And.
It's the roofing on the roof. Yeah, there's a white, there's a new white roof, not new, but there's a white roof on the roof right now that's running up the walls, over the top of the cornice. It's covering everything.
And 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 you're saying the height of that is what's on.
I'm just saying, I'm saying you can't see the height of the parapet wall, because it's really just one big blur of roof, because the roofing is just go, it's all white, everything's white.
That sounds like my roof. Okay, um, and I I did, um. Just have a couple of questions for Ms. Worstella, so thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, it's worse. Hi, I'm Ms. Worstella, how are you? Um, was was there any daylighting study done?
I'm I'm sorry.
You should. Yeah, there was a shadow study, but um daylighting is something a little different. It has more to do with kind of the the ambient light that Ms. Vias had talked about.
I have not done a daylighting study, no.
Okay, um. And uh, and then with the the shed photo that was put up, I mean, would you concede that it eventually the shed may be taken down in that part where of the yard where the light is the best would may eventually be used by the owner of seventy-two Bowers?
Yes, possible.
Okay, okay, that that that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Francisco will open this up to the public, and I'm sure uh what we can see is there are a lot of public here, um, but we don't want just a reiteration of kind of what was said previously. Um, so I don't know how to limit it only to people who haven't previously spoken um and only uh in in response to kind of the new testimony. Um, but I don't even really know how there is new testimony. It's, I guess that there now was some uh light study done, but people already spoke extensively about that aspect of the application. But we'll sit, and hopefully it's eight twenty-eight. I'm hoping everyone will say we have taken into account their uh their comments, uh, and we'll be able to get through to the public by eight forty.
I see two hands raised. I will promote the first one. Okay, so the first hand that was raised declined promoting Kern Weisman. And then I'll go back to the person who declined, just in case.
Well, is your right hand to be sworn? There you go. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and just state and spell your name for the record.
Sure, it's Kern, K E R N, last name Weisman, W E I S S, M A N, at five seventy-six Pile State Avenue.
Thank you.
Great, I'll be very brief. Um, sorry for the darkness. I'm in my car. Uh, and I'm only speaking because our RNA representative got cut uh cut off by his computer crashing last time, so I just wanted to state real briefly that the RNA Development Committee and RNA Board are deferring to the neighbors and supporting their objections um to this project. Um, I won't go into all the reasons and and we state our respect for the board's time, but I just want to say that um this has been uh, the other issue I'm just going to mention again is we asked for some affordability components to be considered, and those were resoundly rejected, uh, which is why we're, you know, never considered supporting this. And in uh in addition, uh, the neighbors that are most affected are opposing this, so we're gonna uh support them in opposition and defer to them. So thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
And I will promote the one hand that's raised that declined last time. Let's see if that was a mistake. Okay, so they have also declined again to be promoted to panelist, and there are no other hands that are raised except the one that is declining.
So we can close the public, is what you're telling us?
Yes.
Great, okay, so we'll close the public portion of the application. Um, staff, um, I assume that that um there are some things you would want to say, especially since uh you were asked specifically to to speak on on some things. Um, I mean, in general, I mean, my viewpoint is it is a corner lot. Bowers is an interesting street. Um, I I always like putting on ground floor commercial. Um, this, you know, is existing ground floor commercial to reflect kind of the the nature of this neighborhood. It's not, it's not truly R one. Um, and and again, Bowers is an interesting street. It's not a large street. Um. But it shows character, like there are other streets like this in other neighborhoods in Jersey City, um, that have had some history of having some commercial thoroughfare. Um. Not not extensive, but it certainly looks like there's some presence. Um. I I think that that the um the opponents have made some valid points um about, um, you know, full, you know, coverage, um, and I and the applicant is making a lot out of the fact that they have like, you know, derelict um garage things, um, you know, the full length of their um building to give them the opportunity to, you know, build out fully above that. Um. So I don't, I don't, I mean, to, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, to to state to them, well, you know, eliminate those things and and put more um green space doesn't seem, you know, necessarily realistic or practical. Um. So I'm sure all those things were considered a lot more extensively by staff than than my uh pontificating.
Uh, Jeff, I had, Josh, I have a uh question. I guess it's for Mr. Joseph's team or uh, listening to the one hour and fifty-nine minutes that I listened to. I may have missed this, but I'm just wondering, were there any drawings or renderings offered that would protect some of that airflow and light coming in, like instead of doing straight across the garage, leave some area open, like maybe only one more unit, so then the next part could be, maybe that's where their um green space could go above those garages and instead of a roof deck, put the deck there so that it will allow for air to continue to flow through that space and also some more end light.
So there there was a pro. I'm sorry.
Is this the only drawing that the rendering of the building that was submitted, and you're asking us for all these variances?
This is, this is what was submitted to the board, correct? There were prior versions of the pro- project. There was a a prior version that was bulkier with a different owner, a different applicant, different attorney. Uh, and there was a prior prior version of this project that had um an additional unit in it. And uh a- after speaking with RNA, they asked for portable unit, because the project was too dense. Um, rather than do that, we we reduced the unit count to four. Um, which which, I I mean, a lot of people tonight have kept talking about the new, the new zoning, which obviously is is not, is not the zoning tonight. It is uh what's being proposed in the future, and it's true that that does propose forty-two units per acre on on R one lots. Uh, it also proposes seventy-five units an acre for buildings that are historically significant, and it permits commercial on on a ground floor. So a historically significant building on on a corner can do four units on a twenty-five by one hundred lot with commercial on the ground floor, and it's just been repeatedly conveniently left out. Um. But I, that's, I I don't think that's appropriate for the board to consider in either direction. Um, just a, I I feel an intentional misstatement uh tonight. Um, but Catherine, the more the commissioner, um, to more correctly, more directly answer your question, there was not a prior version that this applicant submitted to planning that had different bulk. Um, there was, there was not a a different bulk plan for the building.
Okay, so I mean, I was just listening to also what Josh had to say that, I mean, I I probably this the corner building with the um, the multi-purpose use with the store below and the buildings above. That's not an issue for me, but it's the closing it off the whole entire space across the garages that would block the air and light. Um, you know, I wish that something could be proposed that would open that up a little bit more for the uh for the neighborhood.
I.
Yeah, I feel the same way, Catherine.
Thank you.
Um, we, the applicant also did have.
Uh, please.
Um, the applicant also did have extensive discussions with the condominium building to the rear. Since October, we've been going back and forth with them. Uh, by email, their their concerns were were height and water seepage. Um, that they preferred that we attached to their building to resolve a a water seepage issue that's currently happening. That's currently happening. Um. It's it's not the same impact. The adjacent neighbor is also a directly adjacent neighbor. It's every two Bowers. Fully understand that, but they're not the. Not the only uh. The only neighbor.
Doesn't that mean, I'm sorry, doesn't that mean that there's going to be an increased um issue with that seepage with more people and a larger unit?
Currently, we wouldn't. I I don't think we need to bring Jeff up to talk about it, but there there's water when it rains. Coming down and coming in through the side of the adjacent building and into the basement, from what I understand. Um, so reattaching. And and redoing a building adjacent to that would. Help with that. Different impacts, different issues, different concerns. Uh, doesn't take away any of the validity of the neighbor. That seventy-two Bowers, of course, but it's. It's a different, it's a different concern.
Yeah, I'm not structural engineer, so I don't, I don't really completely understand that, but um I my question is really kind of based on um chairman ears, which is. You know, uh, the city, this, I'm sorry, the staff. Um, who we value their input tremendously. Um, looking at their report. Um, and Tony, I guess this is at you. There, I mean, there was no, based on your findings, there had. Shadow study. Uh, my question is, how does to two things? How does today's um testimony? Does that alter based on having sort of two sides, right? Your um. Recommendation. Um, and then the second would be the same with the height, because we've got two different people saying what the height should be. Or how it is actually calculated. And I'm not here to say who is right or who is wrong, but does that impact your recommendation? Or your? Statement.
Uh. Part of um. My report was that uh a shadow study was not required. Um. So. Other than seeing kind of what I saw tonight, and I think what the applicant saw. I didn't really review it much at all. Um, it wasn't required for the ordinance. You have to be at least a forty-foot building. In order to trigger the shadow study. Um, when we rewrote that ordinance, which was only a couple of years ago. Uh, we used other cities nearby uh to model that after. And it wasn't until buildings over forty feet that it warranted the extra um requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, there is no height variance here. I know I've I've heard it a couple of times. Uh, the. The highest uh. A building can be in the R one for this use is forty-four feet. Um. And I believe this comes in under thirty-five. I have to pull up the. I could pull up the the facade, but it's not a D six variant.
No, it was just there was conversation about the, is it forty-four or is it thirty-five? So I'm just addressing that.
I don't know. It sounds to me like the neighbors want a little bit of space in the back. And they maybe they'd be okay with adding another story uh. To have the exact same density, but then they'd have a sliver of light.
The the way Mr. Lewis represented it is the way that we. Have standardly um accepted it in measured time.
So is there going, is there any chance that there could be consideration given to? Just adding one unit above the garage and leave the other one open for air and uh light? And try to satisfy everyone that way?
Or you put that unit on top of the other unit and they have the exact same density. You just now have greater height.
I I.
I'm suggesting that, though.
I I would need to speak with my client. I I I don't. You know. I I I don't know if there's any appetite for that at this point, but I would I would have to speak with my client.
Um, and Stephen, if I could just jump in very briefly. Uh, if we had to make this a four-story building, we would have problems with egress, so we wouldn't be able to do that. We would need a second.
Uh, mate, I mean, I'm I'm talking about cutting it from four units to three. Not put another height on top of the other built in the existing building. Or two on oh, one on top of the other.
Right, I'm sorry. I understood. I was adjusting uh Chairman Jacob's comment.
Uh, have we heard from staff and?
No, so do we want to hear from staff? Then people can ask more questions, but I I I'm gonna ask. Like, most of my questions will probably be geared towards staff.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't like to redesign on the fly.
No, no, I'm not looking to redesign. I'm just saying, you know, it seems like. What what we've heard is people in the neighborhood. Are opposed to this because it impacts the immediate neighbors who are opposed to it. Um, it seems like we could very easily resolve this. Um, and and that's all I was trying to see if there was any appetite for.
You know, um, can I just add? Uh, if I saw, if I'm correct on on that Bowers on the right-hand side, there is another building on the corner. That also extends all the way to the back and also leaves very little room for the in-between houses to have. Any kind of light as opposed, so you have the same si- similar situation on both sides. I don't know how they approve the other building, but I mean, you do have the same situation on one side of the 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 bill, the uh street and then the other side of the street. So I mean. I don't know. I don't know who approved the other side.
And and Sonia, I mean, I'm I'm not very sympathetic to the opponents here. Um, they live in a city. Um, there's no reason that you should not expect. Um, that that other buildings around you will will build at higher density than, you know, than and and not necessarily have. You know, yards around them. Um. But I'm just trying to, you know, it. Try to make good neighbors if possible, but 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 absolutely, I have, I have limited to no uh sympathy for the opponents here. Uh, this is a four, they're building uh uh out um, something that exists. There's stuff existing on the ground level. Um. Really tough except for the the, you know, the handful of the the real one issue they've pinpointed and then. Said it five hundred times. So staff, what are you gonna tell us?
Yes, yes.
Uh, so um, a couple of things to put on the record. Um, historically, as this was represented as a special of a non-conforming use. Um, one of the primary things that has to happen is to determine whether that used legally or. Existed because of the zoning at the time it was created or a pre-existing zoning. Um, and this. Instance, this pre-existing zoning uh tax records show that it was built around eighteen ninety. On that there was always two uh units uh with one uh store on the ground floor. Um, and it has not changed since. Uh, so it has remained this mixed-use uh non-conforming use within the R one district uh since forever. Um. What I can also say is that I. The way that we currently. Through our definitions uh determine frontage is that this is two fronts. Um, and that the what we more commonly, I think, assume to be the rear is actually the side lot line. And the rear is the point all the way to the back. Um. In the future, we are looking to move all of our zones to a percentage instead of a hard number. Uh, for rear setback, and that's because Jersey City um has. A significant amount of regular-sized lots all over the city. Um, and so a percentage would be more appropriate, um, whereas feet is a little bit more difficult. So thirty feet from a point, if you're looking at a kind of a semicircle, would be impossible in this situation. Um. And those are primarily the things that I want to represent. It's always, like I said, it's always a little. I said this in the past, it's always a little difficult for staff. We don't represent the applicant. We don't represent. The community, we represent the city. We try to do the best that we can to provide um. Kind of just the information that you need in order to make the best vote that you can. Um, but this does meet. Uh, some of the things that were recommended in the master plan, uh, and this does look similar. To some of what we are proposing for the future of the R one. There is no density in the R one currently, only youth, one and two family. We would be proposing forty-two units an acre. Um, that is currently what uh we are proposing, and we are proposing in some areas. Corner commercial. Uh, the height is a very unique place actually in Jersey City where there are a significant amount of corner commercial buildings. Um, interspersed throughout residential neighborhoods. Uh, the more we've looked at this, the more we've seen that it's very unique and actually very um frequently occurring. Um, in the heights particularly, so I guess the heights has always been a very kind of dense pedestrian-friendly walkable neighborhood. Um, and part of the reason why we were looking at the two frontages is because um. We encourage, um, and as a part of our master plan, um, encourage uh urban design that creates a uh consistent uh street front. Building front for uh pedestrian, uh, really kind of the pedestrian feel. Um. And I I mean, that's really it that I have to say for staff. I'm. More than happy to answer any questions that you might have based on our view of the application or what uh city standards are. Um, I do, as a part of my report, always can dish, always um provide conditions to do recommend approval. I can read those in the record if you would like. Or we could just uh. However, you want to do.
This, well, one quick question, Tanya. Could you uh just speak a little bit about the? Bakery building? And. The the back of the bakery building, how it's, it seems to be uh stepped. Um, I i- is that something that? Came before this board, or was that a planning board conversion or? Um, it it just seems odd to me that. Those on that Bower Street were pretty much kind of blocked in back there.
So, um, without looking into it, I'm not, I'm not aware. Without looking into it, I'm not aware. Yeah.
Okay.
Tanya, I have a question. So you you referenced that the percentage versus the thirty-five feet setback. Um, might be what the future um is. What is that percentage that is going looked at? Thirty percent? Um, second part of that question is if if just the this property were to have a a one floor. And then there was a rooftop on that, would that rooftop space be considered thirty percent? In that evaluation?
Yep, any, any, it's from the building envelope, so um. Just the setback, a building setback would be a part of that. Required uh. Yeah, yeah, even if there was, even if there was usable um roof or deck face, yeah.
Okay, um, thank you. And then one last question, because I did notice that you said you always have the, you know, provisions um conforming to. Uh, Mike, and I don't remember, and I apologize. Were there any um street trees or landscaping that are associated with this property? I don't know if that goes to Mr. Lewis or um, but I I did. Think that that was perhaps a little bit relevant.
Uh, yes, uh, we are actually providing three new street trees, uh, one on one, one on the front tree and two on the side street. As well as uh green roof trays on the roof around both of the roof decks.
Okay, thank you.
Three new trees.
And and what's the percent coverage of the green roof trays on the roof? Approximately.
Ooh.
Ballpark.
I think I have the square footage of them. Uh, if I ballpark it, it's probably, it's probably twenty percent, twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Their total of over eleven hundred square feet, so it's actually larger than that. It's closer to forty percent, I'd say.
Okay.
Great. Um. So I did, uh. I I don't want to interrupt any questioning. Um. I I did have an opportunity to speak with my client, though. Um, he he is willing to carry the application to the next hearing. Uh, and he he. What he's proposing is the ten-foot setback on the second floor, twenty-foot setback on the third floor. Um, obviously, we would need to resubmit um. Plans for the for the next hearing.
Is that acceptable by the chairman? Maybe we should vote on the project? If he that considered the as the condition?
Ah, Ahmed, what are you, what are you suggesting? I think it sounds. If the I'm I'm totally amenable to this. I I think, I mean, I think the board should be amenable to saying that it sounds like the applicant. Is gonna go back and and try to meet some of the concerns raised by the um uh the opponent.
And I I think what the commissioner is asking, if we could vote tonight, and I I would be very um, you know, uncomfortable with that, doing it as a condition. I I think the. Board needs to see the plans.
Yeah, yeah, I I think we need, I think it's a new application.
So should we table it again?
Oh, oh, okay, that's a new application.
Yeah.
Uh, so ju- just to clarify, are we i- are we saying we have to re- resubmit an entirely new application, or or is this an amendment? Um, to what has, well, we've already submitted.
I I like, it's an amendment. Uh, and somebody who's been taking.
I just want to clarify.
I'll let you know.
It's a very different process.
I need one speaker, please.
Without a decision that's made, so the application is not closed out. You're more than welcome to submit an amended application.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, let's try to get a, let's try to get one thing accomplished today. Um. So.
Do you want to carry this too?
Yeah.
Mr. Joseph, how long will it take you to do this?
Uh.
I don't know, Mr. Lewis.
I'm Mr. Lewis.
Um.
Need thirty.
May eleventh might be pushing it.
Yes, thirty days, two meetings? Three?
I think, I think we do the second meeting. I think that's possible.
Can we, can we um? Can we just list it on the next meeting and then I'll coordinate with with planning staff uh after talking with the professionals and. And my client, and we'll pick a a more permanent date. Um.
Okay.
That work.
Yeah, we'll make that like a calendar date or something like that. We'll preserve notices to that date, and then so May eleventh, we'll come back and who's ever interested in this. On May eleventh, we'll know when the. Real date is. Correct.
I just, I I I want to overpromise uh and and then.
It's okay. We get it. That's good. Okay, so we'll we'll adjourn to May eleven.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna proceed with uh case Z twenty-three dash zero zero eight. The address is nine Route four forty.
Okay. Oh, oh. That's another one. Okay.
Uh.
I didn't miss anything, right, Francisco? There's nothing else?
No, can the attorney who's representing this application raise their hand, please?
Wouldn't that be Tom about?
It's Greg, uh, Greg Assadorian.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Where is Greg?
And I I see Christine. I know she's a uh planner on this, so. I can, I can swing that one for you, Francisco.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A lot briefer, I promise. Gregory Assadorian from the Dakota's Law Firm on behalf of the applicant, uh, David Klein Outdoor Advertising Inc. Um. I think I should probably just give you a brief uh introduction as to the nature of the application. And then uh maybe do some housekeeping with respect to Ray's Drutacata, just to make sure there's no Ray's Drutacata issues. Um, we are here tonight asking for preliminary and final site plan approval. And variance of relief to construct a two-faced digital billboard. Um, the billboard will have an active area of two twenty feet by fifty feet faces. The proposed billboard is eighty-eight feet uh tall. Yeah, there is an existing fence at the property which will be replaced. The property address is nine Route four forty, block three zero three zero five, lot one. It's in the Port Industrial District. Um, so as part of this application, we are uh looking for some relief. There is presently surface parking at the site, which is a permitted use. Uh, a billboard is not a permitted use, therefore it would require a D-one use variance. Uh, and since surface parking presently exists and the billboard would also exist. It would constitute two uses at the site, which triggers a C variance. Um, we have also requested a height variance. Uh, we are of the opinion that we. Uh, we are of the opinion that we do not require a height variance because the code indicates that. Any principal accessory or building in excess of fifty feet triggers a height variance. Here, the billboard is eighty eight feet, but it is not a principal or accessory building, therefore technically it doesn't. Fall under the definition of triggering a height variance. However, we have requested the height variance out of an abundance of caution and will seek it tonight without prejudice. Um, that said, I have a couple of witnesses tonight that I'm proposing. Like I said, we will be brief. I have David Klein on behalf of the applicant. Hal Simoff, um, who's the engineer uh for the Seibu Pride Engineering and Traffic Testimony and Christine Capone as my planner. Um, before.
Greg, before you start, that we do have notices in this case, and I neglected to say that at the beginning. So we have your affidavit, your proof of service, your notice of publication. So Bridget, where wherever you are, we'll mark those as A one.
A one for this application, yes.
And and to briefly, uh Greg, uh comment on what you just said uh about raised judicata. Uh, we've changed the zone, we've changed the master plan and eliminated. Probably one of the main reasons why the last case was upheld all the way up to the Supreme Court. We've taken away that issue. Uh, well, actually, we've taken away that in the master plan, so that was one of the uh. Major points that the court pointed to when they upheld. The original denial of this application, but this is a different application. It's with a different master plan, it's at a different height. Um, and I think, uh, well, anyway. Uh, that just addresses what you said in the beginning, but the floor is yours.
Thank you, uh, I agree, and and I'm not going to belabor the point. If this board just agrees that there's no raised judicata issue, then I'll just proceed.
Yes, proceed, yes.
Thank you. So I'd like to call my first witness, David Klein.
I am here, can everyone hear me?
Yes, raise your right hand to be sworn, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and state and spell your name for the record.
My name is David Klein, K L E I N.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, um, can you please describe to the board your relationship to the applicant and to the site?
Uh, yes, um, I'm the owner of Klein Outdoor Advertising. It is a company I started about thirty years ago. Uh, I am the leaseholder of the site. Uh, my, I've been in the business for about thirty years. My responsibilities include um identifying new locations, negotiating leases, pursuing permits. Uh, constructing, building and operating signs.
Thank you. And can you please describe the general location of the property and then the billboard as it relates to the property?
Yes, uh, the billboard is located on the south side of Route seventy eight or the New Jersey Turnpikes Hudson County Extension. It is located just north of exit fourteen A. The overall height of the sign is supposed to be eighty eight feet. It it is in a V configuration, if you were looking at the sign down from above. It is a two-sided multi-message billboard. Each side has an active area of twenty feet by fifty feet with a three-foot decorative apron apron beneath each signed face. Which has the vendor logo on it.
Thank you. And how do you access the billboards, the digital billboards?
I I mean, I would access it on the site, how I, but by entering the site, how I control the billboard, it's all done remotely. Uh, by a computer, I could even do it on my phone, I can change uh the images instantly.
Can you briefly describe for the board the history of billboards from static to digital?
Um, as everyone knows, years ago, they were all hand painted. We used to drive through the Lincoln Tunnel and we would see them hand painting the boards. Over time, they've progressed to wallpaper, which is now gone. They then progressed to what we called flex faces, which are still used today. Multi-message signs at one point were were what we would call a tri-vision. They were vertical slots that all changed and there was an image, three different images. And today it's a multi-message uh LED illuminated sign. Which is illuminated internally. It has, it, there's no moving, there's no scrolling, there's no animation. It should be considered a static image that changes instantly in less than a second.
And there's no obscene advertisements as well, correct?
There is no obscene advertisements at all, it's correct.
Okay, and the industry has been using digital billboards for approximately twenty years? Would you agree with that?
I would agree, it started about twenty years ago and it's becoming much more regular now.
And can you um describe for the board the operation and maintenance when it comes to digital uh billboards?
I mean, the maintenance is very, very, very limited. Um. Sometimes you may not go to a site that has a a multi-message billboard for year on end. There there's no reason to go unless there's a maintenance issue. And they have become much more reliable and there's really. It's hardly ever do you visit the site after the initial construction.
And what is the frequency of the copy change of the advertisements changing?
Uh, each image holds, we call it a hold time for eight seconds. There's typically eight images in what we'll call a loop, which would be sixty four seconds, and we call it a sixty four second minute.
And the messages are changed remotely, correct?
Everything is done remotely, that's correct.
And there's no animation?
No, and uh not only the 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 units themselves do not even have the capability for animation. So that there is none as per DOT regulations, but it's not even capable of providing animation.
Okay, um, and there's no, I think you touched on this, but no videos, no scrolling, no motion, none of that?
None of that, correct.
No slideshows?
No.
Okay. And this billboard you are proposing, it would be uh twenty four seven?
That's correct, yes.
What are some of the benefits to a digital billboard?
I, we can change the messages instantly, we can instantly. Display of community messages, we can display um amber alerts. Um, emergency messages, we have the flexibility. As opposed to the old style billboards of the flex faces, we can instantly receive and display a message.
And you could, uh, in addition to the amber alerts, you could also display uh FBI alerts or uh silver alerts?
We can, yes.
And you would at this site if granted, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Can you uh describe briefly for the board the state DOT process?
Um.
The permitting process?
Right, the the DOT regulates uh Outdoor Advertising in the state of New Jersey. And the process is after a site is identified and you have permission from the property owner. You would make an application to the DOT, they would send an inspector out to the site. They would inspect it for distances from other billboards to make sure it's in the correct zone, and they also check it inspected for safety purposes.
And has that been done here?
It has been, yes, and I obtained the permit.
Thank you. Um, are you able to bring up the permit? Maybe we could mark it as A two?
Um, I can, give me just. Can I, can everyone see my screen?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Hold on, how do I? Hold on, share screen. Let me try this again. Hold on, can everyone see it now?
No. No.
Oh, hold on, can everyone see it now?
Not yet.
There we go.
Okay.
Mr. Leopold, if we can mark this as A two?
Yes.
Thank you.
You in evidence.
Uh, should I take it down?
Unless the uh any of the board members want to want to wind it up for a longer purpose, longer period of time. So, Mr. Klein, uh, would you say that by granting this permit, this location passed all uh DOT permitting reviews?
It it did, but hold on, not not to seem technologically challenged, can everyone see me, because I'm.
Yes, we can see.
There we go, sorry.
Now, uh, with respect to content, there will be no uh illegal nude, profane or offensive advertisements, correct?
Uh, there would not be, and in my advertising contract, there's a clause which states that I have right to object to any advertisement that an advertiser. Uh, provides to me, and it further goes on to detail that I have the ability to take it down after it's posted. Should someone find it objectionable?
And do digital billboards provide opportunities for local businesses?
They do, it's a low-cost method of advertising and local advertisers. Love it, they use it all the time. Yes, they do.
And as part of this application, you have agreed to uh replace the existing fence and do some site cleanup, correct?
That's correct, we would, um, the existing fence that fronts uh Route four forty, which has the gates. It's a chain chain link fence, we're proposing to install an eight-foot metal fence with new gates. Uh, clean up the whole, that whole side of the property. And the, yes.
Thank you. Is there any other uh testimony you wish to provide to the board or are there any additional exhibits you wish to introduce?
Uh, there is not.
I have no further questions for this board, Mr. Chairman, for this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Do you want to proceed?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to open, if the board has questions or open to the public, or do you want me to go through all of them?
No, no, but let's, let's do everything first, otherwise this will take forever, and and I want this to be done as soon as possible.
I appreciate that. Uh, my next witness is uh Hal Simoff. Um, Mr. Simoff is going to be testifying with two hats. He's an engineer and he's also a traffic expert, so I'd like to qualify him as a engineer. And I'd also like to qualify him as a traffic expert. I could have him write testimony on one, then the other, if you want, or I could just have him roll through everything to save time, however, however you would. Sure.
Go do everything.
Thank you, Mr. Simoff, uh, can you?
Mr. Simoff, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, state your and spell your name for the record.
My name is Hal Simoff, S I M O F F.
Thank you.
I'm a licensed professional engineer, I'm also a fellow with the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I've been qualified before this board on previous occasions throughout the state as well.
And we accept your qualifications. Uh, Mr. Assedorian, if there's anything you wanted to add at my.
No, I was just gonna ask him about his education and uh if he's been qualified as an expert in the field of engineering and as a traffic expert, but if this board. But if this board uh accepts him in both fields, then I'm just gonna move on.
Yeah, we accept in both fields. The the one thing I would say, uh, Mr. uh Assedorian is. I I recall the last time, and it was a totally different application. Um, but something that the that the board has some concerns with when we were looking at a billboard at this, I think, exact location. Um, was that the studies that were done um were like on Route twenty two. Or other other highways where they didn't really come. To us across as comparable in that this is, there's, there's a bend in this highway. Um, at this exact location, so looking at a straightaway didn't seem uh really like you were comparing apples to apples. Um, so unless this testimony is going to be looking at something that's gonna be squarely analogous, I think I'm gonna have the same suspicions.
Hal, you want to take over?
Yeah, if I could share my screen. I'm showing a uh. As you can, this will start the global and then we'll go down to the specifics. You can see the.
Uh, Hal, before you be in, can you just uh identify the uh plan for the record so we can mark it as A three?
This is a viewing angle study. What, since the last.
And the date out uh for for the record?
I'm not sure of the date.
Okay.
It. Since the last application, the Federal Highway Administration has done some studies about viewing of billboards. And they found that the glances of the billboards are important and conceivably as you're looking, the glance would be. Optimized if you're looking out the front window of the car versus kind of turning your head, so it's not a distraction. And the studies have shown that the the glances at a, at a digital billboard is about a third of a second. So as you're traveling east and west on the, on the uh, it's on the uh turnpike. You can see the curve in the road is advantageous because the viewing of in both directions is straight on. And then as you get closer to the billboard, you move your view further down the road. So basically, the study and the the original studies was said that if you look out, if you look out the front window for more than two seconds. It becomes a hazard, and they found that these views are like a third of a second. And then the original study was a, it's called the Hundred Car Study, and it was done to evaluate. Um, like taking your eye off the front road for listening and using your phone and your radio. Some of them were turning around and uh hitting the kid in the backseat. So they they studied those, those efforts. And they found that taking your eyes off the front view for more than two seconds is a hazard. But for digital billboards, the glances are a third of a second. And in this case, it's optimum because you're looking straight ahead as you're traveling east and west on seventy eight. And that's, uh, so that's the global aspect of the uh. What I'm discussing and that, and again, this study was done. Um. This study was done before, I'm sorry, after the last application because digital billboards became much more prevalent in their. Around, so, and they, and the studies have shown that in the the Federal Highway Administration study showed that there was. Uh, no difference in static billboards to digital billboards, and they also opine, again, the federal government opined. That these uh billboards were not a hazard. So that argument, the site-specific arguments that we used the last time, don't apply now.
Thank you. Uh, and in providing a testimony, you are familiar with the site and the surrounding area, correct?
Yes.
And um, are you able to identify the location of the sign? And the site plan?
I'll blow this up a little bit.
Yes, I'm just a, put the date on the record if we could read it.
I have. I have the plan on the floor next to me. The plan is last revised May twenty first, twenty twenty three. It's uh, it's revision five. And basically, what is shown.
Before you go, if we can mark this as A four for the record? Go ahead, Hal, I'm sorry.
It shows the billboard in the lower left-hand corner of the site, which would be the northwest corner. Right here with the pole is there, the 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 setback of the V is about five feet. And the setback of the uh, to the west property line is fourteen feet and the V has been reduced. Um, in its width. What is also important about this, the height is necessary because the turnpike is elevated in this location. So the billboard has to be visible from the turnpike, otherwise it doesn't meet its. Desired intent. And the rest of the site remains as is, the entrance is off of four forty, there's a gate in this area here where I'm, have my. There's a gate in this area here where I have my cursor. Then the rest of the parking, the rest of the lot is just surface parking. There's, there's no generator, there's no, the only utility that we're providing for is a, an electric line, an over, overhead electric to provide power to the billboard. And each face, as you can see, and you saw in the global picture, each face faces flow of traffic.
And the billboard takes up a small portion of the lot, correct?
Well, the billboard is elevated 88 feet, so it's significantly, so it has really no impacts to drainage, no impacts to circulation. Just the pole is the only impediment to the surface of the, the pole is being located where the, where the round dot is steel, and is labeled steel support, and the rest is elevated.
And there's no real disturbance or change to the site other than the installation of the billboard?
Correct. There's no, just the footing for the billboard, and then it'd be, it would be returned to the existing elevation.
Right. And obviously, since it's digital, it won't even generate traffic to the site?
Correct.
Do you have any site plan concerns?
No, it's pretty straightforward. It's just, and there's no traffic concerns because of the, the way it's been positioned. It has optimum visibility, and, and it's, obviously, we need the height to, to be seen from the turnpike extension.
Thank you. Do you have any other testimony that you would like to add, or any other exhibits you would like to introduce?
Well, I think Christine has some exhibits, but as part of the site plan package, there's the existing page, which is Sheet 1, there's this page, and then, which also shows the, the eight-foot steel fence around the property. The existing fence is in somewhat disrepair, and where, and along 440, the applicant has provided a a much more decorative fence along the property line.
Thank you. And do you have any concerns over safety as a result of a digital billboard?
Absolutely none.
Thank you. If you have nothing further to add, then I'll just move on to our last witness.
Okay.
Okay, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state and spell your name for the record, please.
It's Christine C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-E, Cofone, C-O-F as in Frank, O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Ms. Cofone, can you please provide the board with the benefit of your educational background and credentials?
Sure. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Christine Nazara-Cofone. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from the Blasting School at Rutgers. I have been testifying as an expert witness for 28 years in the state of New Jersey, where I have been qualified in Jersey City and well in access of 400 or so other planning and zoning boards throughout the state. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. I am an Affordable Housing Special Master in about 25 different municipalities or so. My firm is the appointed planner for the Casino redevelopment authority in Atlantic City, but by and large, my practice is devoted to testifying on behalf of applicants before planning and zoning boards.
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully submit that Ms. Cofone be qualified as an expert in the area of planning.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Cofone, in preparation of your testimony, do you have a chance to review any documents such as the master plan, the site application, visit the site, and the municipal ordinances?
Yes, Mr. Asadorian, I've done, as I typically do, I have done all of those things in conjunction with preparing to come and testify this evening at the board. I reviewed all of our application submission documents, as well as the city's master plan and zoning ordinance, together with Ms. Marion's 426-23 correspondence on the matter. I did visit the subject property with the applicant, so I had a lovely tour guided by him of the site and where the proposed structure was going to go, so I did all of those things in preparation for this evening.
Thank you. And can you describe the site?
Sure. The site is an irregularly shaped, about .728 acre piece of property in the city's Port Industrial District. It is currently developed with a surface-level parking lot, and the applicant is proposing to introduce a, a digital billboard onto the property.
Thank you. And you heard Mr. Klein testify with respect to the dimensions of the billboard, correct?
Yes, and I would stipulate that, I concur that that is the application that's before the board this evening. The reason we are seeking relief despite some modifications to the master plan for this area, as well as some recommendations concerning signage in the area, billboard still remains to be a non-permitted use in the PI district. So we are here seeking a D variance for that, as is pointed out in Ms. Marion's letter. We are as, also asking for a variance for the varied and illuminated light of that feature as it's a digital billboard. As Mr. Klein characterized it, we have a 64-second minute, which means we have an eight-second dwell time, which, if you will, for each of the messages. So we are asking for, for that D variance. We are also asking for what is characterized in her review letter as a variance, a C variance, for the issue instruments of two uses on one lot. And we are, a height variance was called out as potentially being required. It's my position that based on the structure of the ordinance, the way the ordinance reads, is that you have 50 feet in the PI zone for a principal or accessory building, because the proposed structure is not necessarily a building. I'm not sure that that is applicable, but if the, if you feel it's appropriate, I can certainly put some testimony into that fact when I testify and, and put the proofs in the record. So
And, and I'm sorry, you sure? I was gonna say yes, and if you could just proceed with that.
Sure, of course. So the proofs that are required in conjunction with this application require the planner to testify and the board to find that the site is particularly suitable for the proposed use. You don't have to find that it's uniquely suitable, we don't have to rule out other locations. You just have to find that there's something about this property that is particularly suitable for this proposed use. I would submit to the board that in the PI zone, you're required to have a minimum size of 80,000 square feet. The subject property is .728, so barely half the minimum required site, and it's already developed with a surface-level parking lot. Combine that with its proximity to the turnpike, as well as the fact that there's already a surface-level parking on the property, and I think the board could certainly conclude that this is a quite suitable or particularly suitable location for the proposed double-faced digital billboard, as described by Mr. Klein. In addition to the site suitability, we have to demonstrate that one or more purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by the application. Those purposes are not unique to the city. In my 28 years of practicing, I cannot make them up.
I'm sorry, could you slow down, please? Thank you.
They come right out of the land use law at Section 40, colon, 55D dash two. Statutorily, we have to advance one of them to meet our burden of proof. I believe there are four that are advanced by this application. Criteria A talks about promoting the general welfare. You heard Mr. Klein speak earlier that the digital media mechanism gives us the ability to advertise for things like amber alerts and silver alerts. But it's not just crisis situations that the billboards can, we can advertise. For farmers' markets, we can advertise for community events, school closings, for snow, snow removal issues. So there are many things and many mechanisms that we can communicate with the public to get messages, good and bad, out to the public. Beyond that, as Mr. Klein indicated, it gives smaller retailers another opportunity for a voice to be heard, to advertise their businesses. So there's certainly some promotion of the general welfare. Criteria G of the land use law talks about sufficient space in, in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. While not specifically permissible in the PI zone, this is certainly an appropriate location, given the, the fact that the billboard will be visible from many adjoining highway networks, and that it is in a location that it can be installed with absolutely no detriment to any surrounding properties. So it certainly isn't, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in the negative criteria, so it certainly is an appropriate location. Criteria H talks about the free flow of traffic. There's nothing about this, this proposed digital billboard that will impede or have an adverse impact on the flow of traffic. And certainly, criteria M, which talks about an efficient use of the lands. I'll talk about that a little bit more when I get to the negative criteria. But the perfect, the purpose of the PI district, which is written right into your zoning ordinance, is to enhance and accommodate the city's working waterfront and to provide an area for current port activities. Are you gonna put them? And, and current port activity and future ports development in appropriate locations served by extensive transportation facilities. So at .7 acres, we're not really in a position to be a distribution center or some of the larger uses that are contemplated for the PI zone, but this is an opportunity for the applicant to take advantage of the commercial nature of the PI zone and install this prop, this use on this location, and really make it a more efficient use of this surface-level parking lot and seriously undersized lot. So that's the positive criteria. That also leaves us with a burden of proof with respect to the negative criteria. And as this board well knows, there was a prior application, and as pointed out in Ms. Marion's review letter, that the, the area in this area and the scenic, the scenic, the need to protect the scenic vistas is no longer really relevant. So there are certainly changed circumstances in this area, and the board can take notice of that in the negative criteria. Specifically, David, I don't know if you have the ability to share the screen that shows the aerial, but I can certainly just testify to it because
I can do that.
Okay, if you could, that, because I didn't get to help both for the board to see that.
Christine, I can load it up.
Okay, so I'll just give, I, I lack the test of, the ability to testify and, and pull up exhibits. So when you're talking about the negative criteria, an important concept, I think, is the fact that the land use law does not ask you, hold this or other, any other applicant, to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant variance outweigh any detriment, and that there's no substantial detriment to the impact of the zone plan or the public good. So that's the test, that's what, that's what we're solving for. Me as the applicant's planner, looking to demonstrate that, you as the board's, the board's planners and your board's professionals, looking to balance that, really, the benefits or any detriments of the application.
I'm sorry, could you slow down, please?
And Christine, can you see what I put up?
I can see what you put up, Mr. Klein. So should I pause a minute and let us mark that?
Yes, this is the planned view of the proposed billboard and approved unbuilt warehouse, if we can mark this as A5.
And Christine, please let me know when you're ready for the next one, and I'll upload it.
Okay, I think we probably just use this one for right now, Mr. Klein, but thank you. So referring to A5 in evidence, what A5 in evidence shows is it shows the location of the approved unbuilt warehouse. That site is based on my observation, currently under construction, and that warehouse is a 1.3 million square foot, 129 square foot structure. If you look at the, really, it's like the southern portion, or what would be the right side of your screen, you see in a very small icon box that shows the proposed location of the billboard. So I think that this A5 in evidence does a great job of demonstrating to the board that the proposed billboard at 88 feet is certainly not going to have an impact on the character of this area. The massing of the billboard is certainly less than that of a structure, of a structure with four walls. So I think the board can certainly be comfortable at looking at the, the character of this area. In addition, if you had an opportunity to visit the site, you know that there are a number of other towers and equipment out in this area, specifically a tower that is approximately 230 square, 230 feet tall. There's a cell tower that's nearly 100 feet tall, all within the distance from standing on the subject property. So that informs my decision as a professional planner that there would be no substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan. We're nearly 1,000 feet from our closest residential neighbor, so when you put all that together, I think as a planner, you can certainly come to the conclusion that the introduction of this billboard on this site will not have a substantial negative impact on the zone plan. As far as this undersized lot being able to support two, two uses on one lot, neither, as Mr. Klein indicated in his direct testimony, he can control the mediums and the messages on this billboard from his phone and remotely. Also, this is a surface-level parking lot, so you're not having pedestrians or substantial pedestrian activity on the subject property. So there's no, there's no reason why the site can't support the two uses. So with that, I think I have hit the testimony that was requested in Ms. Marion's 426-23 review letter. And Mr. Asadorian or Mr. Klein, if there's any points that you feel I need to go back over, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, just very quickly, I just want to clarify, Ms. Cofone, the approved unbuilt warehouse is gonna be 129 feet tall, correct?
Yes, 129 feet tall and 1.3 million square feet.
Thank you. And Mr. Klein, I believe you have another, one more exhibit?
I did. I'm gonna, can everyone? Can this be seen?
It looks
Not yet.
How about now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
If we could mark this as A6, it's the, it's the visual looking south at the proposed billboard and approved unbuilt warehouse.
A6 in evidence.
Thank you. So A6 in evidence also does a great job of showing the elevation of the overpass together with the proposed billboard. It may be a little difficult for you to see the billboard because it looks gray, almost looks like it blends into the massing of the building. But you can see at the southern, the southern end of that, there is the surface-level parking lot, as well as the billboard. One of the things I should have mentioned in my direct, in the negative criteria, is that we are going to propose a much more aesthetically pleasing fence along the perimeter of the property. So that will actually increase the curb appeal and increase the screening of the surface-level parking lot over what it exists today. So certainly, A6 in evidence does not depict that fencing, but we're happy to work with your professional staff to come up with a, a fencing plan that certainly upgrades the curb appeal from the site from what it is today. So I think the curb appeal and the visual impacts will be even more improved than what you're seeing on this site for A6 in evidence.
Christine, if I can interrupt, the fence is on the plan.
It's not on this plan. It's not, it's not It's on the site plan, but it's not on A6, so I don't think it is anyway, unless I'm not seeing it.
No, it's not on A6 that we're looking at now, but it's on Page 2 of the site plan.
Okay, so that's the fence that we have provided a detail, as long as it's approved by, by your planning staff, which I believe it has been, then that's the fence we would be proposing to upgrade the curb appeal of the site.
Thank you. Is there anything else you would like to add, Ms. Cofone?
Nothing further on direct.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our testimony. I have no further witnesses.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up to the public. I don't know, Francisco, if there's anyone from the public that has any questions?
Yes, I, I do see one handed. I'm promoting them.
Please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your full name for the record.
It is as spelled on my naming. It's Vrghes, V-R-G-H-E-S-E, last name Thanjan, T-H-A-N-J-A-N.
Thank you.
May I begin, or?
Yes.
Okay. Some concerns about the history of the billboard, and it was nice, but there's also a little history of society that light pollution is becoming a more important concept for society. I question on the billboard. Billboard advertising is one of the few advertising I can think of that you cannot turn it off. It's obtrusive. I could turn off the TV, turn off my phone, turn off the radio, et cetera, but you can't turn off the billboard. Another item is, I think it's a little bit disgenuous to have the billboard gray in the picture. It's gonna be LED and it's gonna be bright. So to have that say it's sort of like gray, like the building, I just don't understand that. Overall, the general welfare as a positive with the alerts, et cetera. We're a fully connected society. Having a billboard flashing at me, which my phone can do for me, is not really a, a added thing for society. We're already connected, and we're aware of these type of alerts anyway. Overall, I really question, one of the items is aesthetics. Uh, overall, I really question, uh, one of the items is aesthetics. Uh, one of the things is this is a construction item and we have many historic council zoning, planning. The, the way things look is important. And here we have electronic billboard. I just, uh, is this what Jersey City is going to be showing people as they're approaching in, in and out of our city? Uh, and I also do have a question. How did the master plan lose a, um, item which I think we went up to the New Jersey Supreme Court? Uh, and I just want to know the little history of that part and what happened to that on the master plan. Thank you. Thank you.
I can answer some of the questions about light. LEDs are adjustable. So in this case, they've been designed to be just above ambient light. So the advantage of an LED billboard is at night, it's much less light. It emits much less light than in the daytime. And in the daytime, it varies on a sunny day versus a cloudy day. So they're designed to be just above the ambient light levels compared to the, the old style with flood lighting all the time. So the floodlights, so this is a much less, this emits much less light than the, uh, than the previous version of billboard lighting, the LED. And, and they, and they've been proven to be adjustable that, that really lessens the light impact and the light pollution.
Al, um, in addition to digital billboards emitting less light than static billboards, is it also true that digital billboards have less light spillage?
Yes, the, the LEDs are focused forward. And there's a, a limited angle to the, to the focus because they're, they're shielded, the elements are shielded and kind of like recessed into the, into the, uh, into the, into the face. So they, they produce, they focus and they, like it's the old style television sets where they, where they focus straight forward. And these are the same way. And we've designed it and because of the focus of this, the location of this billboard being on the curve in the road. So you have a straight view from the highway. This is an advantageous design.
Thank you.
At this time, I see no other hands raised.
Just quick administrative question. When Mr. Thanjian gave his comment, did we get his address on the record? Maybe I missed it.
Uh, Commissioner, I don't believe so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
He made some really good comments.
I mean, that, those are, that's usually valid and we should try to remember it. Apologies. Nobody lives near this location. There's no immediate neighbor. To, uh, nine, four, 40.
Yeah.
Um, let's officially close the public portion of the applications. Do commissioners want to ask questions about positive and negative criteria, or they want to first hear from staff on this?
Well, um, just one thing, um, Josh, you did say that there is no, uh, there is no residential area right nearby, correct? So we're saying that, you know, there's no light pollution that's going to, um, affect any one living in the neighborhood. Like there's no one, there's no residential area right around this, around this, the proposed site. Or is there?
Not, not
Yeah, it looked like across the turnpike. I don't know. That's not country village back over there. I don't know what is that over on that side? Would they be affected by light?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know. There are people that live. I mean, there's nowhere that has, you know, we're, we're not like out in the country where you're not going to find people in some vicinity. But it's not like there's, there's, there's not a house across the street from where this is going to be. It looks like it's going to be placed at the end of a parking lot for a proposed warehouse space at the bend in the highway between the turnpike extension and 440.
Right. Okay.
I mean, where the, the, now this is a different application than, than what we saw previously. My, my concerns are, are not too dissimilar from what we're, what was raised by the public. You know, it's not, I don't have any recollection of, of a, any billboard anywhere along the turnpike extension in Jersey City. And I mean, I think that, that I feel good about that. I, I, I don't, I don't know that we, we, but I'm trying to understand, you know, trying to think of, you know, I, I kind of also agree, like, you know, the benefit that there could be a community alert, um, on a billboard, like, well, I, I think that the, the, to me at least, the, the negative of seeing that alert statement on the billboard outweighs the, the, you know, being alerted to something. That's kind of my, my general viewpoint. Obviously I feel I'm, I'm trying, I'm struggling with, with what we should be looking at objectively. And, and, and you know, what, what I'm saying honestly are my own biases that I, I would prefer to have zero billboards in Jersey City.
So I mean, I, I, I know there are some billboards, I believe, as you go towards, if you're saying the turnpike going up towards the George Washington Bridge. Um, and up towards Route 17. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not objecting to this billboard. I was just, if there's light that's affecting people living there, which there are no people living around it. I mean, that, but I wasn't part of the original, um, session and the lawsuits and the Supreme Court, whatever. So I really didn't have any objections to the billboard. And, and as long as I'm assured that it's not affecting anybody, there's no residential area around that that's being affected.
Yeah, I mean, like, like, like Josh, I aesthetically don't like this. Um, but I also kind of am not buying the argument about how this advances the MLUL. I'm not buying the general wel- welfare argument. I think, you know, everybody gets Amber alerts on, on their phones. And I think that the boon to smaller retails, retailers is a little bit overstated. You know, it pro, it, it is, if you're in the billboard business, that little triangle probably is the, the ideal spot for it. But it also raises the question of why we want to grant a variance for this, this use that isn't an intended use in that PI district, district. That gigantic warehouse, you know, there was a, a lot of debate, but, but that was something that we granted a variance because it supported the underlying zoning of the Newport industrial thing. And then as far as it, I thought it was also comical that it was pointed out that it promotes the, the free flow of traffic. It's the, the billboard doesn't promote the, the free flow of traffic. It doesn't necessarily inhibit it, but it doesn't help it along. Um, and you know, yeah, it is an efficient use of, of that little triangle, but it also begs the question of why are you even trying to develop that little triangle for, for, for something that is not already kind of a permitted and liked use. And then even if we remove that scenic vista language from the master plan, for whatever reason, and I would like Tanya to opine on that. But, but even if, if that was removed, that doesn't mean that we can't still do this variance test and look at positive and negative criteria. I think that there, even just in terms of normal aesthetics, there are a lot of people that like the fact that you get that sweeping view when you take the turnpike extension. And that if you're bringing, uh, picking somebody up at, at the airport, you might choose to go that way instead of taking the Pulaski Skyway because it's a beautiful ride. And, and you're, and you're, you're not looking at a billboard, but you know, but, but that's me, that's me. So that's
Mrs. Chairman, we hear the comments, um, if it's agreeable with the board, we would respectfully request that, uh, this matter be carried. We could come back with a, uh, light expert if you wish and give us an opportunity to retool, uh, versus taking a vote tonight.
I mean, it's your application. Sure. If you want to do that, I'm not going to object to that.
Yes, if we could, uh, put it off for one month.
You guys work out the timing with staff or whatever.
Excuse me.
Sonia, sorry, were you going to say something?
I was and I sneezed. I apologize.
I mean, the only thing I would, I would ask, Tanya, do you want to put staff comments on the record?
Uh, so I, I can, um, at least, uh, come into the commissioner's question. On in the staff report, um, which, you know, I'm thinking about right this second, I believe I didn't email out to the commissioners, but I did post on the portal. So, uh, forgive me for that. Uh, it was not intentional. But within that report, um, I, uh, uh, provided the actual language that's in the new master plan. Um, and it does mention the use gun, uh, but I just want to read it out real quick. Hang on, you know what? I think the game is a little loud. Give me, can you hear that in the background? Yeah, give me one second.
I didn't hear it in the background.
Me neither.
Yeah, I didn't hear it.
I apologize.
But we didn't hear anything.
You didn't hear the game? Okay. I'm sorry, I heard it. So let me just read that real quick. Uh, it's the, the recommendation is that a complete revision of the city's sign regulations is recommended to ensure that high quality, attractive and compatible signage companies development. Careful consideration should be given to the regulation of billboards in order to preserve important view sheds in certain district and residential areas. Providing clear guidelines will provide consistent guidance to applicants with enough flexibility to accommodate their needs. This will help reduce staff time and resources reviewing applications. Um, just to provide some background into that is that effectively, um, even though on paper, we have not, um, completely banned billboards from Jersey City. Um, in practice, we have, um, and that is because where we permit it within the Journal Square District, they are not allowed to be as close to each other because of a state law. Um, New York City, which the intent was for the center of Journal Square to be like Times Square. Um, New York City has, uh, separate, uh, standards, DOT standard than the rest of the state does. And Jersey City doesn't get that, um, uh, flexibility like, uh, New York City does. So we've effect, we effectively kind of outlawed banned, uh, billboards. Um, and so the recommendation from the master plan was instead to just say no and to prohibit it would be to provide again, like, just kind of like it reads, um, a little bit more clear guidance, um, high standards, things like that. Uh, in order to, um, I guess really at this point not have to, uh, be constantly, um, just kind of opposing and prohibiting, um, to come up with something that was a little bit more reasonable. So I just wanted to at least get that on the record. I, I can send out my staff. I'm, I'm sorry again that I didn't send this out, but I, it is on the portal.
Okay. Um, well, I mean, we're carrying this, so, um,
Okay.
Yeah. Let's just, I don't know what else unless anyone wants to ask questions now, but I think that we're going to be hearing this anyway. So you guys just take a date?
I don't know. My, my thought is that I, it's, it's a billboard. Um, I don't foresee it to be an, an issue. I pass through there all the time because I go to physical therapy through there, everything. And I can almost from, even from the, from what I take from the, 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 uh, schematics of everything, doesn't seem to be harming anything or anybody. I don't think there is any residents. I, I don't, I don't foresee it as a, a big issue, uh, to have a billboard there. Uh, it, that's just my, my opinion, but I, I don't foresee it. I, I would, I would say yes, but that, that goes with everybody else. That depends on the other board commissioners.
Uh, basically, yeah, so ask, I, I think it's much different than that one, what we discussed in the last, uh, case. But I would like to hear what, uh, the new study would do and, uh, and, and this to hear it next week and next month and see what, uh, what's new that can present.
Okay, great. So you guys have worked out a date and, uh, good luck. We'll, we'll hear from you soon.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, can I have, uh, one second? I'm, uh, trying to reach out to my client, see if we have the billboard manufacturer present because he could discuss the lighting issues and maybe we could resolve this tonight versus having to come back. I'm, I'm just trying to save time and I'm trying to see if we can put the manufacturer on now. It appears, uh, I, I apologize. It appears that we do have the manufacturer. If I could put him on now, um, I think it would save everybody a lot of time and the testimony is in everyone's minds. Sure. My apologies for the confusion. Um, I believe we should
Greg, is that Scotty?
Yes.
I promoted.
Hello, all.
Hello.
Hello.
Let me see, get my video started here. My name's Scotty Bland. I'm with Watchfire Science. We are
Mr. Bland, would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Yep, sorry about that.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name for the record.
Uh, Scotty Bland, S C O T T Y, Bland, B L A N D.
Thank you.
Mr. Bland, can you, uh, tell the board who you work for and your job duties and responsibilities?
Yeah, my name is Scotty Bland. I work for Watchfire Science. We are a digital billboard and sign manufacturer. Uh, my title is the account management supervisor. So, uh, my duties are from sales to service. Um, and one of the, uh, responsibilities is to prepare with my engineering team, these light studies that I believe has been submitted to you all.
Can you describe the, you had the testimony and the comments from the, uh, board and members of the pub, and the member of the public?
Yes, I did.
Can you please, uh, provide testimony with respect to the comments that were made?
Sure. So, um, as the member of the public made, uh, was about the brightness of the sign. Watchfire is in, uh, compliance with both the O triple A and the ISA, uh, standards set across the nation. Uh, and that is that our, uh, our foot candles will not increase the ambient light more than point three foot candles. So just giving a little background of how, how we, uh, the measurement of light is, is, um, put forth is when we, when we describe the intensity of light with Watchfire, it's, it's at a Nits level. Um, but it's very hard, uh, to, in the, in the field to measure Nits. So O triple A has put out a way of measuring light through a, a candle meter. Um, it's an old way of measuring light. And so what they have put out is that the light from the billboard cannot increase the ambient light more than 3.3 foot candles. And in order to do that, as, as, um, we've, we've heard in previous testimonies, we have a, a photo cell on our billboards and it's a hundred step photo, photo cell. So depending on if there is cloud coverage or if there is, um, you know, it, it gets dark at night. Whatever that ambient light is. dark at night, whatever that ambient light is, it looks at that and it determines how bright that billboard needs to be. Uh at its brightest, so when the sun is facing that sign directly, it is at seventy five hundred nits. But at night, it's gonna go all the way down to three hundred nits, so just a fraction of its full brightness. Um, that is one thing that I would like to address. The other thing is um looking at, and I don't, yeah, you have it pulled up here. Is you have that cone of light, um, the billboard LEDs in general um are directional, that it's it's been stated. And if you look at that as zero degrees, um, your foot candles at, you know, say three hundred feet is point zero eight and at five hundred it's point zero three. But if you just go over twenty degrees, uh it goes from point zero eight to point zero seven at three hundred degrees. At five hundred, it's point zero three, so it doesn't change much at five hundred degrees. But then if you go all the way out to that seventy degree angle, uh and you're at a hundred feet, it's point two three. At three hundred feet, it's point zero three, and at five hundred feet, it's point zero one. And I know those numbers don't mean too much, but just for um a comparison. If you think of a porch light, that's a hundred watt light bulb that your neighbor has, you know, fifty to a hundred feet away from your adjoining property. Um, the closer you are, the brighter it is, right? But as you get further away, so for example, that hundred watt porch light at um at fifty feet away, that's point zero five. So, I mean, looking at your neighbors, I'm not sure how if you're in the country or or rural area. Uh, but at fifty feet, that's at point zero five. If you compare that to our billboard, that's comparable at zero degrees at four hundred feet. So if you're at four hundred feet away from that billboard, it's very comparable to your porch, your neighbor's porch light being left on at night. If that helps kind of bring in perspective of how bright that billboard is going to be.
Thank you, Mister Bland. Um, we'll mark as A seven what we have on the screen now. Uh, can you just walk the board through this and describe what we're looking at?
Um, yeah, so that's just an overlay, the cone of light that you see on the left-hand picture over there. And the right-hand picture is just the other direction, the other face of their digital billboard. Um, and it's just the cone of light. And now there is another chart that is actually more, I I'd say valuable, looking at it. It's actually those numbers that I were I I was describing. So this is a perfect view right here. Um, so you can see the the traffic doesn't see the billboard. Um, probably till about two to three hundred feet there uh at direct zero degrees, like so straight on with the billboard. So it's gonna be roughly point zero eight um to point one seven foot candles is what the impact is going to be. Um, and again, that's going to be at all times of the day. Uh, so day, night, it doesn't matter because of that photo cell, uh the board automatically dims. Um, and that is a hardware that we install. If there was for some reason, if there was an ambient light or a a light source from that uh factory that's being built. If for some reason there was ambient light that was causing problems with that photo cell where it wasn't reading properly. We also have a a software photo cell that actually looks at the sunrise and sunset sunset times to make sure that we're still in accordance with the O triple A and the ISA guidelines.
Thank you. Do you have any additional testimony you would like to add?
I do not.
Okay, and you heard the uh comments from the one member of the public and the board uh with respect to lighting and spillage and uh item set effect. And do you have a position with respect to those comments?
With the spillage, the the LEDs are directional, as you can see on the chart there. Uh as far as the light pollution, uh again, I would I would reference the photo cell remarks that I just made.
Thank you. Um, I have no further comments, Mister Chairman. Uh, I'm sorry, no further questions for this witness.
Thank you. Um, does does anyone from the board have um any questions for Mister Bland?
Can I upload another image, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Okay. I'd just like to show the billboard, the proposed billboard next to the warehouse, just to show the scale. Um. I'm trying to. Okay, I'm gonna try to share my screen. Th- this is the scale when traveling east to north. This is the proposed billboard and this is the approved unbuilt warehouse.
David, before we proceed, let's mark this as A eight. This is the uh eastbound traffic at a thousand feet.
I'd also like to show it the westbound. If I can. This is the westbound at a thousand feet. And this is westbound. Can everyone see this?
Uh, it's the same, David.
Oh, hold on, hold on. Can everyone see this? It says westbound traffic at one thousand.
Yes.
Uh huh.
Let's mark this as A nine.
And I have one more I'm gonna show. This is westbound traffic at three hundred feet. As you.
A ten.
The 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 billboard, I don't know if it's the correct word, is subsumed into the warehouse. In both directions, I could even show. This is eastbound at fifteen hundred feet. Th- this is your your view. And when you're backing up this new warehouse is a hundred and twenty-nine feet tall, it dwarfs the proposed sign at eighty-eight feet.
Uh, let's mark this as A eleven, David.
Okay, and I have of one more I'd like to share. I'm sorry if I'm just a little. I mean, thi- this is, if everyone can see. This is the proposed billboard traveling westbound at two thousand feet. It's right here. Coming the other way. It's before the bend in the road. It, and it's completely subsumed into the warehouse. Um, I wanna see if I can go the other direction.
Be- before you move on, uh, this will be A twelve, westbound traffic at two thousand feet.
I I I have other perspectives. Um. I mean, maybe this is the one because it has all of them. I'm sorry, am I going on too much? I don't want to lose the board. Okay, I I'm done. I'm sorry, guys. I just wanted to show the billboard in relationship.
Not that I want to keep going, but first of all, I'm a big fan of billboards. Like, I'm a marketer. I think digital marketing for brands is um super relevant. And so I actually um am eh not opposed, but I am cognizant of my my peers questions about the light um and the impact. Um, what I think would be super helpful is to actually show a picture of an actual image of a billboard. Because all this gray is actually not reflective of what we're gonna be looking at um on a regular basis as a commuter. Um, so that would be one. Um, secondly, David, do you or Mister Klein, excuse me, do you have a process of how you identify and determine what images are gonna be there? And is there an opportunity? Is that of public opinion? Are we just trusting you and your agency to pick what you're gonna put up there? Is it based on dollars? Is it based on community? Like, what are what are the criteria?
I mean, I, I'm I'm not trying to understand. Um, I put up of whoever, I mean, I have the right, maybe I'll try to answer it this way. Uh, one, I do have a picture of what a billboard looks like, a a real digital billboard. Um, should I get that up or should I try to answer your question first?
You can do both.
Okay, this. I'm gonna.
And just in the future, it'd probably be good to have it at different times of day to answer, you know, potential questions from potential boards.
Okay.
Can you? Yes, let's mark this as A thirteen. It's a picture of an actual billboard.
Th- this is a a digital billboard during the day. As you can see, it's completely, it's like muted. Um. The thi- this is actually a public service announcement I did for a billboard. This is along Route thirty-five in Eaton Town, New Jersey. And the advertisements I would display would be uh, Miss Park, I sense there's another question coming.
Well, I was just gonna just pause for a second. Mister Bland, can you about the whatever those digits or digits or widgets or whatever, the levels of that this actually in that seventy-five hundred to three hundred.
Oh, yeah, so I would say with the overcast, you're at probably around fifty percent. Now, I I can't tell you without seeing an actual reading, but with the overcast, the sun's not directly on that sign. I'd say that's probably about fifty percent, maybe a little bit more.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Um, eh yeah, I I'm not needing to dig into Mister Klein, your your how you select. I'm just wondering, and maybe that's none of my business, so.
And Mister Klein, I I, you know, I don't know if you're gonna take this for a continuance or not. But we do have a video of the billboard in front of our factory. That is a time lapse from daytime to nighttime, and it shows the effects and it's actual advertising that's up on the board. That shows basically how the digital impacts the surrounding area. Now, it's on a dead-end road. There's not any other lights other than some security lights on our um manufacturing facility. But I think it does a really good job of uh answering some of the questions that uh the board and and even the public have made.
I'm going to need a break soon.
Glad about you, Bridget, yes. Well, why don't, why don't you, we take a five-minute break and miss, let Mister Bland uh queue that up?
Yeah, I can see if I can find it.
That'd be great. And um, Miss Park, I can ask your question when we return as far as the advertisers.
All right. See you all, bye.
We need Jeffrey. Here he is. And we got Kate.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, great. Here we go.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I didn't have my video on, sorry.
Scotty, if we could just mark this as A fourteen before you proceed, and this is the video?
This is a video. It's gonna go from kind of like morning hours here through the day back into evening. And when I get a little bit darker here, I'm gonna pause it just for a moment, just to making us uh an observation. We have a, we have a security light over here on the left-hand side, and I don't know what the wattage is. I wish I did. Uh, but you're gonna see much more of an impact from that little security light compared to the billboard. Uh, just as far as looking at it comparative to the the building and in front of the sign here, there's very little light. My argument's not that the billboard does not produce light, that that would be a silly argument. But my argument is i- in comparison to other light uh surrounding light, the ambient light. It it's very minimal comparatively. So let's go ahead and finish this video.
Right, are we?
It's finished.
Yep, it's it's all done.
Okay, can can I, um, if it's okay with the chairman, can I please address uh Miss Parks's question about the?
Mister Klein, I'll table my question. It's really not relevant to this. I I really, but I do appreciate the video, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I think that uh concludes our presentation.
Okay. Great, um, thank you. So if there's nothing more from staff and no one has more questions. Um, does anyone want to make a motion?
You.
I make a motion.
Put any of my, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Comments on the record, I have conditions or I I'm fine, whatever you want, I'm fine to do, but.
Sure, um, you want to put them on the record or or at least ask if um the applicant is okay with them or whatever you prefer.
I I I'll just, you know, kind of restate again. Um, yes, the master plan is different. The conditions are completely different. This is a full life cycle for me, this application, um, as it is for some of you else also, I believe. Um, but yes, uh, the master plan, and I do wanna, I think, um, sell this out a little bit better. Um, is encouraging the city, of course, uh, not to completely forego its view sheds. But to make um reasonable uh regulations. Um, and billboards are typically in places where they get high traffic because they are more than not seen by cars and not necessarily walking pedestrians. Um, and so we would have to look at places where we would get high traffic and create reasonable um, regulations for them. Um, and so this would conform with that. This would really be, the idea is that um it's not necessarily blocking the view shed now, especially with the building and the height lowering. Um, and it being at the bend and not picking up the holes of the view shed. Um, that's really, that's really it. I know that it was a little slightly confusing, so I hope uh it's a little bit clearer. Uh, the conditions on the record are uh no change should be done without gap approval. Um, and if there is changes, it would might have to come back for an amendment. Um, all testimony is binding and the exterior fence uh shall be installed prior to any issuance of a CO.
That's fine. And uh Mister Chairman, do we need to reopen to the public to see if they have questions for Mister Bland?
Me too. Um, sure, um. Does anyone from the public have any questions um for Mister Bland? Um, I I don't know, Francisco, I'm guessing this is no?
No, there there's no hands.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion.
So can we?
We can do anything you want, Sonia. Uh, the applicant has completed.
Okay, so I case Z twenty-three zero zero eight uh with said variance, nine Route four forty with said variance.
Second.
Just for the record, was that a approve motion?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Aruho?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly? Uh, Vice Madam Chair Coyle?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries, all in favor.
You know, five in favor.
Five in favor to both, sorry.
A little late.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Okay, good luck. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, um, hey, we've got some memorialization of resolutions. Anything else?
Yes, just let's go do the resolutions and uh we go from there. Uh, let's see. The first one, uh first two were for March ninth. Present on March ninth were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donley, Shadid, Arroyo, Patel, and Silva. The first case is Z twenty-two dash zero eight zero. Onan Properties LLC, the address was twenty-eight Bacon. Uh, that was an application for a D variance, and that that was approved. Six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
The next case, same date, same commissioners, same vote. The uh, the case is Z twenty-one dash zero two five. I'm sorry, I I was miss miss uh misspoke, Z twenty-
I'm sorry, I, I was miss, miss, uh, misspoke. Z twenty-two dash zero six one. The applicant was Mister Mohammed. And that was an appeal of the zoning office's denial of a, of a, the parking permit, but then we granted him a variance for front yard parking. The address was seventy-four Graham Street. So all in favor of memorializing that is, hi?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, and next comes Z twenty-one dash zero twenty-five. That was heard on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the applicant was Corinne Carlson and Lindsay McKenna Carlson, two ninety-four Fourth Street. It was an application for a C variance. Present on March twenty-third was Acting Chairman Green and Commissioners Arroyo, Allen, Park, Patel and Brown. That application passed, six in favor and none opposed. In favor of that?
Hi.
Hi.
And the next, uh, three occurred on April thirteenth. Present on April thirteenth with Chairman Jacobs, Donley, Green, Arroyo, Silva, Park and Allen. First case is Z twenty-three dash zero one five Grove Street Hub LLC. That was approval for a one-year extension on two thirty-fourth street. That was approved, all in favor. All in favor of approving that? Hi?
Hi.
And the next one is, um, same commissioners, same, uh, date. Z twenty-three dash zero seventeen, uh, Devi Mata eight four seven LLC. It was eight four seven, eight four nine Communipaw. Again, that was for three one-year extensions for those approvals and that was approved unanimously. All in favor of approving that?
Hi. Hi.
In the last case, Z twenty-two dash zero seven one. The applicant was Scott Norwell. It was for C and D variances for twenty-four Clifton Place. And that was approved, seven in favor and none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, that ends the evening.
Good.
Amen.
Okay. Bye, everyone.
Good night.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Hi.
Good night. Good night.